Counsel, I'm going to call this reconvened public hearings of April 7th. It's reconvening from March 11th and April 1st. We're going to call it to order. For purposes of quorum, please ensure your video is turned on. Reminder that for everybody on the call that only counselors should have video enabled. Any staff or applicants should disable their video. And if I see it all, talk to the clerk about adjusting it. The meeting will be convened by electronic means under the order of the Minister of Public Safety, Order Number M192, and we're all participating remotely. If my connection or council, any council members lose connection during any portion of the hearing, will recess and reconvene as soon as we're reconnected. The live stream of this meeting has both audio and video. Video of council members speaking, presentations, amendments and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Members of the public can also listen to the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which we retweet tweeted out at at Van City Clerk. Our presentations, amendments and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. I also want to note that Vancouver's city of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. So I remind counsel that when addressing speakers and staff will avoid using gendered honorifics. It will instead refer to the person by the first and last name or role or title. So for example, instead of Mr. Mayor, Mayor Stewart is is fine. Lastly, following the updated guidance issued on February 5th, in-person participation for local government meetings is is not permitted. Therefore, speakers providing comments to counsel will do so by phone and moderator will assist. Great. So with that out of the way, clerks with the roll call, please.
Mr. Stewart is in the chair, Counselor Carr.
Here.
Counselor Dejanova.
President.
Counselor Fry.
Here.
Counselor Swanson.
Here.
Counsel Hardwick.
Present.
Counsel Weeb.
Present.
Counsel Boyle.
Present.
Counsel Bly. Counsel Bly, are you on the line?
Sorry, Rosemary, I'm here. Sorry, trouble getting off beat there.
Great, thanks. And Counsel Kobyong.
Present.
You have Coramier Stewart.
Thanks very much, clerks. Pulling my script up here. Okay, so of course, we want to acknowledge that we are on the traditional unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh nations, and we thank them for their generosity to all who work, live and play on these lands. I also want to take a moment to recognize the contributions of Vancouver City staff who work hard every day to help make your city an incredible place to live in. Just before we begin proceedings, just a reminder that speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers can only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing via our online web form at Vancouver.ca forward slash public dash hearing dash comments. And that link is also on Twitter. Speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. So to get through your slides, please say the word next and we'll help you through it. A reminder that counsel's role at a public hearing is to be quasi judicial body, which means that counsel is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of speakers. After hearing from speakers, counsel may approve in principle the application, refuse the application or defer the application for further consideration. As a reminder, counsel, on March 11th, we approved item one with no changes. On April 1st, we approved item two with changes and began item three, Amendment to Downtown Official Development Plan, Area K3, Granville Street, with opening comments from staff and then began hearing from speakers, which will continue this evening. Counsel staff advised a minor error in the summary and recommendations for this item and incorrectly stated the area on Granville Street as being being between Drake and Nelson, where the area is actually between Drake and Helmican. This is the only location of the error and the online record has been corrected. There are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll free 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers list. And the number will be repeated throughout the evening, tweeted out and available on the live stream. Our first speakers this evening will be speakers nine, 12 and 19, who are on the line. We're on the line, but inadvertently missed at the last meeting. Following those three will resume with speakers 26, 27, 28 and so on. So clerks, if you're ready, we can begin with speaker number nine, Catherine Helansey.
My name is Catherine Helansey.
Just a minute, please, Speaker. Counselor Swanson.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I missed the last part of this when we were, when it was happening before, but I have reviewed the video.
Great. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, Speaker, over to you whenever you're ready. Please go ahead up to five minutes.
Hello, my name is Catherine Helansey. I'm a resident, citizen of Canada, and I'm against this amendment. And really, I want to sort of speak mostly about community engagement. I mean, we received a notice of a proposed change to the downtown official development plan and open house on November the 27th, 2020, where it talked about just secured rental housing. And the language wasn't particularly clear as to what the intentions were. And then on February the 25th, 2021, we get an amendment, which now mentions social housing is going to be added. And there's no mention of parking lots or anything like that. And when I've shown the amendment notice, the 11,000 amendment notices that were sent out, when people read an example of it, they just, nobody understands it. I didn't truly understand it until Thomas Daley's presentation on April the 1st, which was, it was very clear, it was concise. And I just don't understand why that wasn't pre-recorded. And there was a link put in the notices given out so that people could spend 14 minutes of their time having a look and and really understanding the implications for the neighborhood. And then the community engagement regarding the process on March the 11th, we were the third item. And I've been on calls like this before when I understand that, you know, the time, sometimes agenda items go on longer, but the city council was advertised to go on until 11:30 at night. And the meeting was adjourned at 10 o'clock. On April the 1st, it was advertised that the meeting was to go on till one minute before midnight. It was adjourned at 10 o'clock. On both occasions, I've been waiting three hours to talk and I'm just cut off. That is very frustrating. And then, of course, there was a problem with the lines and that I was passed over. So now it's a third kick of the can and I can't help wondering sometimes if there isn't a sense of of a war of attrition, that people are just going to fall away, they're going to get too tired to phone in. Regarding the actual proposal, in a nutshell, I'm going to say it, as I've said it before, we are saturated in this neighborhood and we are saturated unfairly. So there is so much social housing already. And Jericho Beach, they had their proposed social housing application withdrawn. It was suddenly an unsuitable neighborhood. Why was it ever considered suitable? I don't know. Or did Jericho Beach and the environment simply have the clout to get that proposal removed? And there are so many issues in our neighborhood. There have been so many changes. The Howard Johnson, there was no community engagement in that. It was very, very secretly done. It's now Lugat, the Holiday Inn had ex encampment neighbor residents brought in as well. Hosteling International has been bought, all of which was done without any community engagement. Over the overdose prevention site, that was driven through with a change in the vote. We did our best and there really are consequences for this neighborhood. This neighborhood has changed. And I mean, in reference to a caller that said that, you know, there is no proof that it is person X, Y, Z, the causing the troubles in the neighborhood. I can't definitively prove that it is Lugat residents who are firing off fireworks at 6:00 AM in the morning in our park. I can't prove that certain people using the OPS are overdosing in the park and having to be driven away in ambulances. But it seems a fair guess. It's fair to say that since certain things have happened, like the Howard Johnson, like the Holiday Inn, like Hosteling International and the OPS, the neighborhood has changed and now we're going to get more social housing. I just can't believe that this is even being considered. And I would urge council members to at least delay any decision on this until the neighborhood in Yaletown has had a proper chance to really understand what the implications of this amendment, the implications are. I think that would only be true and fair community engagement that I would expect of a city like Vancouver. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You do have questions. Counselor Kirby Young, up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Couple of questions for you. Thank you for being here tonight and hanging in there. I know it's extended over a couple of days. You had mentioned a couple of things that concerned me with respect to the public consultation. And I heard you say, I think that one session was advertised as going till 11:30 and another till midnight. And procedurally, our council meetings only go till 10 o'clock. So I just wanted to inquire how and where you saw that or that was communicated.
I've got a photograph of it, which I'm willing to send you. You just give me the, yep. It's, where can I see it? Let me just check. I'm now looking at the public hearing with the video. And on the right, there was a thing which said scheduled and I took a photograph of it. In fact, now it says schedule Wednesday, April 7th, 1800 hours to 2330, five hours and 30 minutes.
Okay, maybe that's something that we can take away. I suspect that that's because they book the technology times in case the meetings extend later, but if that's causing public confusion, I appreciate you sharing where you saw that.
Oh, it definitely, it definitely is. I mean, we couldn't believe it. Yeah. Yes, currently you're scheduled to work until 2330.
It happens sometimes. Okay, and then my other question. My other question to you was, you know, when you talked about the importance of community engagement and the sort of the pace of change that's been happening in your neighborhood. I wonder if you're aware that there is slated to be a planning process, a future planning program for Granville Street downtown to build a vision for the area that would be a more robust kind of engagement process in terms of what Granville Street could or should be in the future. And so do you think it's more appropriate that this be considered as part of that as opposed to making a significant change from what has been, you know, primarily a cultural and entertainment hub in the city?
I would like to see community engagement regarding what is happening with K1, K2 and K3. I think that we, as a community, need to understand how that development process is going to roll out. Because the way it looks to me is that K3 is being sort of used as the area where all the social housing is going to be freeing up K1 and K2. And I'm just really asking counsel to give us time to digest this, get it out to people in Yaletown so that they go in with open eyes. We can, with proper community engagement, I think that people are going to feel listened to. They're going to feel respected and I think it will be a fantastic thing.
Okay, I hear you. Thank you. That's my time, but I appreciate you clarifying that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Counselor Fry, questions up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. And thanks for joining us, Speaker.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm curious if you could share with me your understanding of what what social housing means.
Social housing that I have, as I have seen it, well, there's low income housing, which I understand is, I know people in in low income housing. Social housing, as I've seen it play out so far in my neighborhood, is, for example, ex Oppenheimer residents that need to be housed quickly because there's an encampment and Strathcona is going to be dismantled at the end of April. So a lot of us are concerned about that again. I might, I don't know if I'm wrong in thinking that, but.
Well, I mean, and that's the interesting, because this comes into the semantics of the language. Would it surprise you if I told you that, that in fact, the Lugat, Howard Johnson is is what we would call supportive housing? And that social housing, as we define it in the city of Vancouver, is housing on land that's owned by the city, the province or the feds or co-op or not-for-profit, operated by a not-for-profit at which 30% of the housing is at the housing income limits, which is set by the BCT government, which in Vancouver for a one-bedroom would be almost $1,400 a month. Would that surprise you to know that that is how we define social housing?
Well, I think things on the way on. The way it's played out in my neighborhood with an overdose prevention site being parked right across a children's playground, we don't know what to expect, to be quite honest. And that's a very nice idea, 1,400. There are lots of people suffering. I've got friends who are suffering with high rents and and stuff, but that's great. But it, the fact remains that I think that the council has lost the trust of many people in this neighborhood by doing things where there just wasn't the engagement and troubles have, well, the neighborhood problems have been exacerbated.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate your articulation of the sort of failure at consultation here. And I guess I was really curious how you interpreted social housing because it's been an issue for me that I've brought forward to counsel before, that I think the definition of social housing is unclear to the public and they often think that social housing may be what we would commonly refer to as supportive housing, like the Lugat or the Howard Johnson.
Well, the fact remains that it was going to be initially, in the first notice that we got, rental, secured rental housing. That became secured rental housing and social housing. And now you could add supportive housing into another amendment. We just don't know anymore.
No, I appreciate that and I appreciate your concerns. So thanks for coming and speaking to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another question from Counsel Weeb.
Yeah, you brought up an interesting point of having the staff briefing in advance. Is that something that you think would really help the community better understand these motions and some of these reports coming to counsel? If there was a online video kind of explaining the reason for this work, is that something you think would?
I think it will be absolutely invaluable. Yes, I think it will be invaluable. And they are given to you at the beginning with visuals so that you can understand exactly what the nature. I mean, you've prepped, of course, but it really helps to see those slides. And because all we had was a paragraph or two, that was on the website as well. People don't know what FSR means. Everybody was saying, what does it mean? What is it? We just don't understand. Some people still don't understand. And yes, I think that presentation would, for all item agendas, really, just a little presentation of 10 minutes so everybody's really clued in.
Yeah, and I think you brought another point there, and I know that we're doing a community plan. The idea of having a little tutorial on FSR, a tutorial on social housing, just so that there is kind of a city building 101 to help everyone get up to speed when they are, for the first time, seeing a lot of this information. Is, would that be helpful moving forward?
I think, I think that would be very helpful, yes.
Beautiful. Really appreciate your points today. Thank you.
Thanks, caller. I have a question for you. It's the mayor here. I am wondering, just thinking about Granville Street, and you're very familiar with that. There are those two empty lots. You know, thinking through what we might, what might do with them. Would you be all right with just regular market rental housing on those spots? Are you thinking we shouldn't have any more housing on Granville Street at all?
Um, well, I mean, it's very expensive land and it's not being well utilized with cars, I suppose. I think there were three parking lots, are there not, that are being considered? But if you say two, I'm not sure.
Well, there's probably three. I just have two in my mind because I walk, I mean, I'm your neighbor. I walk around quite a lot and I see, I see those two lots right on Granville Street. But you're right, there's probably three in the package.
Yep. I personally wouldn't have a problem with, what did you refer to earlier? Just ordinary.
Market rental, you know, it, yeah.
I think that would be fine. Yes, I mean, absolutely.
I mean, that is, that could be considered this evening, but but again, there is some thought that this might be rolled into a larger plan. So I just thank you for your your thoughts there as we puzzle through what. So I appreciate you calling in this evening. There are no more questions for you, but do thank you for calling in.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you. Hey, bye bye. Counsel, we have speaker number 12, Michael Geldert, next.
Yes, good evening. My name is Michael Geldert. I appreciate Kate's comments. I'm a resident of Vancouver and I speak this evening as a director of the Safer Vancouver Society, which is a nonprofit organization seeking the highest standards of care in the formation and implementation of public policy impacting community safety. I speak to you tonight to remind you, please do not lose the forest through the timber. We are against the proposed amendment to the downtown official development plan in Area K3 because the consultation process is woefully inadequate and it frankly hasn't been done. The recommendations set out in the staff report are vague and a particular concern to local residents and business owners. Many have expressed to us a concern that speaking publicly will put them at risk. And I note that some time ago now, some of the written comments with full names of residents was forwarded to us. I think it was March 11th. Apparently, written comments from some members of the public, complete with their names, were made publicly available on the city's website. It was an incomplete list and we asked that you look into this. These are avoidable issues that continue to drive down community confidence in the current process. Some of the repeat comments, and I won't go through the whole list, of concern, is this to create more rental housing or social housing? They aren't the same, and this certainly follows up on the point that was made by Counselor Fry. I don't even understand the difference between secured rental, social housing and what I've seen at the Howard Johnson Hotel since 2020. There's already too much social housing in this neighborhood. The Lugat isn't temporary if they are building a permanent site across the street. If the residents near the Jericho hostel are important, why aren't we? We moved here to raise our family in a neighborhood marked marketed as safe. Our politicians clearly don't care that we are trying to raise our family here. The amendment is confusing and unclear. The proposed changes will hurt retail business even more than COVID. If City Hall is unanimous in support of small business owners, why aren't they involved in this decision? I no longer feel safe walking down Granville Street. This amendment and the future of Granville Street planning terrifies me. K3 paves the road to a second downtown east side. I don't appreciate being turned into a wraparound service provider. More social housing near Emery Barnes Park will make it unsafe for children. These comments are repeated over and over again by people who simply have lost confidence in City Hall and their counselors, to be honest with them. Whether that's in fact the case or not, that's really the, that's the sentiment that we're getting. On balance, we feel the report to counsel on K3 has not been understood by the community. Most people who reached out to us were unable to understand it. We spent quite a bit of time trying to work them through it and it's not a position that we look forward to being in on an ongoing basis as things develop this year. I want to underscore Safer Vancouver is not opposed to an increase in the support for people at the frontline of risk, nor an increase in availability of rental housing. We are opposed to the recommendations to amend for two reasons. First, there has not been community engagement. Efforts to do so have been superficial and are received by participating members of those communities as a one-way conversation. The public consultation summary in the report confirms minimal online traffic and it reads as an attempt to convince readers that being available for review is the same thing as actual engagement, and it isn't. The report confirms a total of 13,008 notification postcards that went out. 56 responses were recorded. That's less than one half of 1%. Of this paltry number, only four emails and phone calls were logged. Furthermore, of the submissions recorded, only 17 qualified in support of the K3 amendment. I know on April 1st, those numbers ticked up. I don't have the numbers offhand, but I imagine they've, they hopefully ticked up even more over the last couple of days. In any event, what we have here is an unacceptable process for engaging the community. And if the intention is to inform and secure for your benefit as counselors, a foundation of support on which to vote. In this case, notwithstanding, only 30% of the response from the public is in support of the amendment. Counsel, please, and I encourage you, read this report for what it, what it reads as to the public, a document that has not been read or understood by them. In drilling down even deeper, I ask you to acknowledge the position that you are put in to vote on an amendment absent the support of the people of Vancouver. And secondly, K3 and the surrounding blocks appear to have already a disproportionate concentration of existing supportive housing. Counsel adopted the Housing of Vancouver strategy in 2017 and this amendment could be understood as an attempt to simply meet the 10-year targets, regardless of what the people of Vancouver are prepared to support. The recommendations of staff talk about the city's goals, but with respect, the city doesn't walk Granville Street. The city isn't raising a family in this neighborhood and the city isn't more afraid for their safety in 2021 than they were in 2017. Goals are important. Achieving them can be laudable, but not by imposition. And the ends do not justify the means. You've accepted the responsibility of acting, pardon me?
Yeah, you're at your five minutes.
Oh, I'm at my five? Okay.
It goes fast. Okay.
It does.
Thank you so much for your your time this evening. You do have a question, Counselor Fry.
Yeah.
Counselor Fry, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. And thanks, Mr. Geldert. Just curious, with what I just mentioned in the previous, to the previous speaker around the definition of social housing, does that change any of your thought patterns on this? Are you familiar with how we define social housing in the city? And I appreciate that it has been a confusing process and maybe not articulated well.
I personally understand the distinction. I'm a lawyer. I understand it myself, but the problem really is in what I understand. It's, it's what do the general, what does the general public understand? And they certainly do not come even close to understanding it. And it doesn't, you know, I'll go back to Kate's comments. It doesn't seem to me like it's too terribly difficult to simply make a clear, concise summary available for consumption by the public in advance and really set yourselves up to the extent that you do then get a clear understanding, the support that's going to make it a lot easier to move on these.
Okay, so more work to be done.
Thank you so much. I think that's it for questions for you. Thank you so much for calling in this evening.
Okay, and thank you. And Mayor Stewart, just one quick comment. I was informed when I registered that as I was speaking for an organization, I was going to be afforded eight minutes. So if that's incorrect, maybe just have someone take a look at that.
No, you do have to have two other people to verify that you're speaking on their behalf and that's, that's in the bylaw. And if you let us know at the beginning of the, of your presentation, that's how that that works. So is that a little clearer?
I get that now, for sure. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Counsel, just on the, just the clerks, let me know about the, the names being published. Of course, we do publish names. It's a legal requirement of the public hearing that people state their first and last names and per our requirement where they reside. Although we don't publish contact info, we would just say, for example, if they're a resident of Vancouver or not. So just, just to be clear, that's a standard practice. Okay, counsel, we are on to speaker number 19, Kelly Tompkins.
Mayor Stewart, that speaker is not on the line.
Okay, thank you. We have 26 Brett Jones.
Hello.
Hi there. Hi, please go ahead.
Hello, Mayor Stewart and counselors. Thank you for taking my call. I'm a Vancouver resident, residing approximately five blocks from the K3 area and also a shareholder in a business in the K3 area. I'm in opposition of this amendment for several reasons. First, I want to make the point that the K3 area not being recognized as a Granville entertainment district by staff seems to be a drastic oversight. Between Helmskin and Drake, there are over 1,500 liquor primary seats along with several other bars and restaurants. In most major cities, entertainment districts cohabitate with other commercial offices, arts, and industries. These sectors work well together because operations do not disturb each other and actually have a positive effect. I believe Granville Street could have the bright and vibrant future it deserves, but with the addition of social housing, that would not happen. It is apparent to all of us that Vancouver has a social housing and mental health issues, but council would be doing a disservice to that community and all Vancouverites by passing this amendment. Individuals with mental and social issues deserve to be helped, but by placing them in an area that is considered the entertainment district would be extremely short-sighted. We have already witnessed B.C. Housing overpaying for a two-star hotel and increasing the wealth of a local billionaire at the expense of taxpayer dollars. B.C. Housing also lied about who was going into that hotel, filling it with, or not filling it with families and single mothers, but with other people. Driving over the Granville Bridge into downtown used to be a visual experience. Now it feels like driving into the Walking Dead. I want to thank the Bonus Group for risking millions of dollars to upgrade the lower part of the GED and hope we can bring the vibrance back again. Please note that I have no affiliation with that group. I'd also like to express my displeasure at the last week's council meeting for allowing the shameless self-promotion of these timber companies in what sounded like a Dragon Den-type sales pitch. I understand that there is an emissions point, yes?
I do understand your passion here, but if we could just, you know, pull it down to the kind of factual objections, that would be great. Thank you.
Well, I believe the vote will come down to you, Mayor Stewart, along with councillor Bly, and I believe it's time to step up and make some positive decisions for the entertainment industry, along with the social and mental health individuals in need and oppose this amendment. And councillor Fry, yes, I definitely think that there is a lack of understanding, but also, uh, social housing and all that, and it's a huge issue. And Mayor Stewart, no, there should not be housing on Granville. Putting individuals in housing with entertainment together do not coincide. I don't think so at all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for calling in this evening. I don't see any questions on the queue for you, so I'll just say thank you again for calling in, and we'll move on to our next speaker. Counsel, the next speaker is speaker number 30, with the single name of Omar.
Mayor Stewart, Omar is not on the line.
Hey, thanks. We have next speaker number 31, Paul Stoylen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Paul Stoylen, and I've been a resident of Vancouver for over 20 years and have worked directly in hospitality in the GED and in Yelltown during this time. I'm speaking today as a member of the Hospitality Vancouver Association, as well as the GED and Yelltown business owner. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about this extremely important and sensitive topic. Despite the difficulty of opposing something that is intended to help others, I strongly oppose this amendment based on the fact that there was little to no consultation done with key stakeholders in the area and also on the strong belief that an alternative, more inclusive solution can be created through proper and thoughtful collaboration. There is no doubt that housing and services for those suffering from mental health challenges and addiction should be a main priority for the city of Vancouver, but not at the expense of arts, culture, and entertainment venues, restaurants, retail shops, and the safety of residents, customers, tourists, students, and so many others who visit the GED and surrounding neighborhoods daily. As we have all recently heard or seen on the news, mischief and aggressive behavior towards others in the area has exponentially risen since the Howard Johnson was converted. The current situation is real, and it poses a threat to most, if not all, nearby businesses and the overall safety of local residents. I have personally experienced and witnessed an excess of incidents involving aggressive behavior and vandalism in Yelltown and on Granville Street over the past 12 months. And although this is not completely uncommon throughout the city, and in any city for that matter, this has been unlike anything we have ever seen. The city of Vancouver takes great pride in the life safety of its citizens, and this is evident in the rules and regulations that our businesses must adhere to. Unfortunately, the K3 development plan will compromise the safe environment that these measures were designed to create. According to the City of Vancouver website, urban planning focuses on livability. That means creating a city of neighborhoods where people can work, play, and shop. It also means creating urban environments where residents feel supported and engaged and can enjoy the vibrant street life and their fellow residents. The website goes on to state that in building our livable, sustainable city, the city will facilitate high-quality urban design that contributes to an attractive, functional, memorable, and safe city. The recommendations outlined in this report contradict this philosophy because they would not only make it difficult for all businesses to function properly, but also unsafe for the thousands of people who work in the area and for those who contribute to its culture. Although the K3 development plan on paper is outlined to two city blocks, it is naive to think that it will not directly affect the GED and the downtown core, similar to what has happened over the past year, relatively speaking. Furthermore, the K3 presentation last week stated that the K3 zone is not within the GED. This is simply not true, as the GED runs from Drake to Georgia with iconic businesses throughout. In order to preserve the safety and longevity of the many social and economic benefits of a vibrant and safe entertainment district and the adjacent residential neighborhoods, I strongly urge council to oppose this amendment and to collaborate with others to come up with new solutions that are equitable and livable to all who may be affected. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for calling in this evening. You do have a question from councillor Weave. Councillor Weave, up to five minutes.
Hey, Paul, as someone that's been in the industry a long time, do you, your recommendation to us to not approve this today is one based on the fact that you think this should be included in a larger GED conversation? Is that correct?
You know, I think, I think it could be, I think it needs to be included in an overall Vancouver conversation. I don't have the answer to that, councillor Weave. I do believe, you know, a collaboration with the province, with different groups, needs to be done, and it needs to be, it needs to be carried out in a thoughtful and an inclusive manner. I just think, and I strongly believe, that this entertainment district was created so many years ago by the city and so many other stakeholders that have just put everything into it. And, you know, I think the entertainment district needs to be an entertainment district. And, you know, I don't think it's a case of NIMBYism. You know, as many speakers have stated, there's a lot of supportive housing, social housing in the area. And, you know, I think, I think, you know, as we've seen, you know, we may have reached the threshold for the area, and so we should be looking at other areas and potentially working more closely with those that are already in the area in supportive housing. You know, I think, I think we just got to, you know, we can't rush this. This is just an extremely sensitive topic. I do respect that. And I just think that this, you know, the downside of this is just far too great. Jobs are going to be lost, the vibrancy of the city, the entertainment districts, the gateway to the downtown core. And this is just, this is not going to, you know, this is not going to, you know, it's going to, I think, hurt the city overall.
And then I guess one of the things you said is that if we do have a larger conversation, that you think there could be a compromise that would make this a vibrant streetscape that supports community safety and can have kind of that entertainment district that was kind of visioned for in the past. Is that what you hoped for?
Yes, absolutely. I think it's a collaborative approach. I think a collaborative approach could work. And I think, you know, so much has been done, and there's infrastructure, and the foundation has been laid over the past 50-plus years. And it's, we are so close to making it, because everybody, what we've heard is everybody wants to, wants to see a vibrant and, you know, exciting entertainment district. And there's no doubt that Granville Street is taking a, you know, has a bit of a bad rep from the previous years. But, you know, there's, all of our, you know, iconic entertainment venues are there, and they're not going anywhere. And, you know, I think it's better to build all that up and, and, you know, take care of the supportive housing and the people living in the community that are already there, and then, you know, revisit other solutions. Yeah, that's how, that's how I feel about it. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, and thanks for bringing that perspective.
Thank you. You have a question from councillor Kirby Young as well?
Go ahead.
Oh, you're on mute, I think, councillor Kirby Young.
Hi, thanks for speaking. I just want to follow up on councillor Weave's direction and questions. And the recommendation that we have, one of the recommendations in this report specifically says that as part of the efforts to advance and implement the Vancouver Plan, council directs staff to report back in 2021 with a draft scope of work and budget for a future planning program for Granville Street downtown to build a future vision for the area. And I want to be clear as to whether or not you would support that, or if you are saying more explicitly that you already feel that there is an established vision for this area as an entertainment, arts, and cultural hub, and it really is more about revitalizing and maximizing and evolving that existing vision because this street has a purpose. Can you comment on that? I just want to get really clear on where you sit.
Good, sorry, I don't really understand the question. Could you mind repeating that?
Yeah, so maybe I can break it out this way. In simple, there's a recommendation in the report that says there should be also be a broader planning process for a future vision for Granville Street downtown and decide what a vision would be. And I'm asking if you think there is already a vision for Granville Street that's defined as an arts, cultural, an entertainment hub, and that really it's about working to make that the best it can be as opposed to determining a new vision for the area?
Yeah, I guess my, thank you for clarifying. My answer would be yes to both. I think, you know, the foundation's been built, but there's so much more work to be done. And I think a collaborative approach and a proper consultation process, I think, is needed to make it truly what it was intended to be.
It's a vibrant kind of cultural destination that people love and have all the great memories of, right?
Absolutely, yeah. I think it's just, it's the hub. I mean, there's a reason. I mean, everybody references the Olympics, and the Olympics, you know, obviously is a long time ago. You know, I think everybody in the entire city was expecting everywhere to be busy. But you know what was busy 17 days straight was the Granville Entertainment District. And, you know, I think that's, that's what people reference quite often, and I think they want to see that and people from all over Metro Vancouver and all over the world. You know, it's a, it's such a culturally relevant neighborhood, and I think we need to respect every neighborhood in the city and equally, the people that need help, that need help with supportive housing and mental health challenges and addiction services. So, yeah.
I hear the importance of having a cultural destination and the attraction that is. Thank you for speaking.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I also just have a quick question for you. I was just wondering, you know, you do see entertainment districts around the world. I'm pretty familiar with, like, say, Soho in London, where there is more of a mix of residential and, you know, different venues. You know, say, market rental housing, just to avoid the current controversy. Do you see any room, like, say, along Granville Street for rental housing if it was located over top of venues, say, in those, you know, empty lots that you see? Or do you think that just shouldn't be considered at all?
No, I think it should be considered. I think space, you know, there's some issues with space in the city. And I think, you know, we've got to go, we've got to, we've got to find places for people to live. And I think, you know, obviously, the pandemic is going to change that. I don't know if there's truth to the, you know, to the notion that people are moving and migrating outside of the downtown core. But I do believe that, yes, I believe, you know, some more rental housing needs to be available for a lot of people, right?
That may be, as we go forward with thinking through this, that may be a good place to start. And I really do appreciate your expertise and, you know, speaking with us this evening.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Counsel, we're on to Brent Belcher, speaker number 32.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Up to five minutes, please.
Great, okay, thanks. Yeah, my name's Brent Belcher, and I'm born in Vancouver and lived in the downtown south for the last 22 years. And, yeah, I want to reiterate a lot of what's said, but I think it's important to draw a line under it. But, you know, this is our entertainment district. It's a gateway to our city, and I just don't see how housing is a good thing in that place. And, you know, going back and forth between, you know, this is another social assistant. Housing, you know, there's been criticisms around Howard Johnson and its rollout. And of course, we're waiting to see what happens with the youth hostel that's been purchased. So it's already happening, plus all the SROs that are there. So there's a lot of people living on Granville Street. And I think we'd all agree that Granville Street is a street that's, you know, in some trouble. So if I was looking at, like, stop gas solutions, hmm, let's add more housing. It's like, no, I think we need to put a brake on it right now. And I think we need to, you know, look at, you know, what this place is, like, let's increase office, let's get the entertainment. I mean, I work in the arts, like, let's get things in there that work together. If anyone were to move in there, just a regular old person into a rental place, the first thing I would complain about, I would hope, would be the vibrancy and how noisy it is on the street. And what we want is one street where we can let loose and have a party, and that's what Granville Street is. So it's not a place to put people that have addiction issues and such. That would be, you know, a terrible sort of mismatch, in my opinion. So it's my two bits.
Thank you so much for calling in. I don't see anybody in the queue, but I do have a question for you. Oh, councillor Kirby Young, I'll let you go first. You go ahead, up to five minutes. I didn't have myself on the list, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that was a holdover from up there.
Oh, okay, sure. Speaker, so I was wondering, you know, I wonder if, with the kind of, if we think about Granville Street and the entertainment district and its gateway entrance, what about things like more hotels on Granville Street? Is that something that you might think would be valuable? I mean, that's kind of outside the list of what you meant.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, that's, I just grieve every time our city bought, like, I get the issue that we're trying to house people, but every time I see another hotel that's being purchased, I, of course, these days with COVID, you know, hotels are in trouble and there's nobody here. But we have a severe lack of hotel space in Vancouver. I used to work, I used to work in the meetings and conventions, you know, business. And the fact that Vancouver doesn't have a 1,000-room hotel negates us from tons of conferences that would come to this city. So absolutely, we need, we need housing. I want to see that youth hostel. That's an important demographic of people that can't afford, you know, regular places. So I worry that when we take that away, what's going to be replaced with that? So absolutely, yeah, let's build the hotels.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, what we've been hearing tonight is folks want more of a conversation around this, and would that be kind of what you're hearing too?
Well, yeah, and the fact that there's a plan that's supposedly coming down the pike in about a year. This stopgap to me is not, is not a solution. It's, let's take a breath and just make sure we make the right decision. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for your thoughts this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. I think that's it for registered speakers, so I'm going to make my first call for any other speakers who wish to speak this item. Yes.
We have three more speakers on the line.
Oh, on the line. Sorry, did I miss?
Next speaker is speaker 35.
I'm sorry, I didn't go to the next page. So apologies to speakers, speaker number 35, Samantha Hayes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, sorry about that. I, of course, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Mayor Stewart and city council. I'm Samantha Hayes, a resident living two blocks up from K3, and I oppose this amendment. First off, I'd like to say I agree with everything most of the previous speakers have said. This neighborhood is way too saturated. I also agree with the previous speaker that almost everyone's supporting this amendment, obviously not all, but most are the developers, lumber suppliers, and those making money off this development. Anyways, I believe there are many issues with this amendment. The first point being that I'm sure you're all aware of the current situations at the Howard Johnson and others, but also the Murray Hotel and SRO that is located two blocks up from Granville and Helmskin and Hornby. I lived directly next door in a beautiful, brand-new- I lived directly next door in a beautiful, brand-new building. Moving here, I was beyond excited to be living downtown Vancouver as a young professional. However, that dream turned into a nightmare due to SRO, social and subsidized housing placed in a beautiful, thriving area. What the Murray Hotel has brought to this block slash neighborhood is a prime example of what will continue to happen to Granville Street and the surrounding area. Every day I walk out of my building, I'm welcomed by a tenant or visitor of the Murray Hotel doing drugs in broad daylight, crime scenes of those who have committed suicide, which some of my neighbors have personally witnessed. I know this is brash, but it is real. This is what we personally deal with, as well as drug deals, used dirty needles that we have to step over, smash windows to residential and retail buildings all along the block. And these are just to name a few scenarios that happen every day in this previously beautiful neighborhood. Please keep in mind, this is just one example of many close to and in the K three area. I cannot stress this enough. This is the wrong location for this development. This block of Granville Street is the heart of our entertainment district. Even in the amendment, it states, and I quote, "Granville Street is located in the heart of downtown and is one of Vancouver's iconic pedestrian and transit priority commercial high streets." If you use Toronto as an example, their entertainment district, King Street West, is a thriving area that provides integral and profitable tourism for the city, which has become a desirable destination similar to Granville Street. Bringing this development to Granville Street will push out restaurants, retail, entertainment venues, music, the arts, residents, et cetera, ultimately destroying the heart of our beloved, beautiful downtown Vancouver. I believe that this is an easy answer and definitely not a cost-effective answer to fix social housing, subsidized living, SROs. I truly believe in fixing an issue at the root of the problem, which is obviously providing resource for mental illness and rehab facilities to those that cannot afford it. These houses are definitely not providing that. And I know SROs and social housing do not cause addiction or crime, but it does enable it. Overall, there are other location options. Granville should not be an option on the table. It will ruin the future of our entertainment district. Lastly, I just beg you to look into other options. Vancouver is too beautiful to be destroyed by bringing these type of people into this area that is just not suited for it. Please take this all to heart, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Speaker. No questions. On to the next speaker. Jeff Leung, Speaker number thirty-six. Jeff Leung?
Mr. Wood, that speaker is not on the line.
Thanks. Roxy Feller, Speaker number thirty-seven.
That speaker is also not on the line.
Okay, we have Speaker number thirty-eight, Carrie Bonus.
Hi, Honorable Mayor and Council. Thank you for granting me an opportunity to speak today. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my brother Dino Bonas, and Serena Rubio, and tens of tenants for our company, Bonus Properties. May I be allotted the eight minutes accordingly?
Clerks, I'm just going to check with the clerks, so this is a second speaker. One second, I'm going to check with the clerks. I'll get right back to you.
If you could hold my time while you figure that out.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll reset it until we're, I'm clear, I'll be right back to you, Speaker. So, Speaker, I've just checked with the clerk and things, you know, just, we don't have this request too often. But according to clerks, the other folks that you're representing, the group you're representing, they would have to be present on the line. So they would also have to phone in and just concede their space to you, essentially, to speak for them. That's what enables the eight minutes.
All right. So I'll just proceed. First of all, I'd like to thank the council and mayor for all their efforts to find solutions for housing of all types. And also, with their efforts with respect to sustainability, these are commendable objectives. And I recognize that there, the impetus perhaps for planning ideas here, but the way they've been presented here, I oppose. And just in terms of, I'd like to also speak of my credentials. I've been working forty years in mixed use. I've spent almost a quarter century on Granville Street. I work no less than forty hours per week. I've clocked in about forty to fifty thousand hours specifically on Granville Street. It's ten thousand hours to be an expert, and I consider myself an expert on Granville Street. And that's why I'm quite disturbed with what's been presented with this amendment. I think housing of any sort should not be allowed on Granville Street, even if it's the most glorious seven-star luxury, Granville Street. Prior planning and council, planning spent years developing what was allowed on Granville, what wasn't allowed. And in the establishment of the Granville Entertainment District, the main rationale was that residential uses were incompatible with with entertainment. But this actually overlooks the history of Granville Street. Granville Street is a century old, perhaps even older. It's always been a commercial street. It's never, ever been a residential street. Residential was introduced erroneously back in nineteen ninety-one. Prior to then, there may be a handful of apartments. It's always been a commercial venue. So historically, it's been a predominantly commercial street. It should continue to remain as one. Commercial density, whether unrealized, unbuilt density currently or actually existing, should neither be reduced nor replaced by residential uses. Commercial use is part of its history, and it, the density is contemplated here of five to six FSR, five, six to six times the site. We're built a hundred years ago, and I use the Tom Lee example at nine twenty-nine Granville Street, where we repurposed the building and currently delight in two shoes there with the seven hundred and fifty employees working out of that office. And to be quick, residential is roughly one person to four to five, to, for every four to five hundred square feet. In the same space, if it's retail or entertainment, you could fit up to twenty or thirty people in that same space. An office, you'd fit four people where you would, four to five, where you'd fit one resident. And businesses need density. And they, you know, also with the history, we've got the signs, the noise, the vigor of a commercial district. There are a hundred and fifteen square kilometers in Vancouver. Why is, are we going to bulldoze through Granville Street's heritage to expand residential use? Something that does not reflect its history and its heritage at all. We have so little heritage here. Are we doing this just because we're being bullied by the province, because it's politically expedient to do so? To the other caller's statements about hotel use, I was told by planning we have a shortage of three to five thousand hotel rooms. And now we're going to convert spaces that are ideal for hotels, for residential. And even in the presentation, we see on Gastown, the building, it's falsehood that businesses won't be displaced. In the presentation, using a comparable site on Granville, on Gastown, on Water Street, it shows a small retail and all-residential bug. How can we have residential if we're going to have forty-foot bright kinetic neon signs? I urge you not to pass this. And also, we've been studying about building, and we have two properties in the K three zone, and we've been looking at doing mass timber exclusively for commercial use. So I urge you, for all the reasons everybody else said, there wasn't proper consultation here. There are a lot of falsehoods from the planning. Feel free to ask me. I can tell you what they are. That's my five minutes.
That's the five, but you do have a question from Counselor Fry. Counselor Fry, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Bonas. Nice to have you join us here tonight. And appreciate that your family has a long history on Granville Street. And we've reminisced about the old crack joke.
We're keeping it alive.
Yeah, you're bringing that back, right?
I would love to, actually.
Well, so I'm curious, because I know your family's had holdings there and been involved in a lot of the businesses that have helped kind of define Granville Street over the last few decades. Have there been conversations with the city and sort of direction on where Granville Street could go as an entertainment street? And do you have any kind of longer visions that you can share? Not asking about the Commodore, per se, but just visions of Granville Street and what it might look like.
Yes, I mean, right now, on nine hundred block, I mean, this is where I'm quite perturbed because three years ago, we asked for additional space to, basically, exactly what's being asked here for, but for commercial use, which is consistent with the heritage of the city. And we've just been stonewalled by Mr. Herschow and Mr. Daley. And we've got three years of emails and conversations, and we've received zero feedback on the ability to do that. But what, I have two leases that I'm negotiating for, and they're quite unique uses. One is for an immersive art gallery, similar to the type that's being shown in the Vancouver Centre right now, the Convention Centre. And it would be a permanent installation on an entire second floor. And on the third floor, I'm negotiating a tech school. And so the art gallery anticipates to have a minimum of a hundred thousand visitors per annum. And I'm afraid if this K three goes through, where we can put residential uses in residential zones, not in commercial zones, we should preserve these sites to be built for unique creative offices, unique creative businesses, to, for nighttime economy, for the cultural hub. These, these type of developments, if it's residential, that's the highest and best, most expensive. They'll be snapped up, developed as residential, and the potential to build, you know, unusual commercial businesses that complement and enhance and help synergize the existing businesses will be lost forever. And that's what really, really troubles me. I can't see an art gallery like what we're negotiating now go into the central business district, for example. And the tech school, they want to, you know, be where Vancouver's original tech started in the incubator level, you know, incubator offices that happened in Yale Town. So I'm really concerned that if this zone is allowed to go, it'll displace not only the existing businesses, but it'll displace the potentiality for hotels in unique creative office spaces, cultural hubs, nighttime economy things. And that is really, really troubling because there's nowhere else we can put it that has the history and actually, you know, the potentiality to on transit and so forth, where we can have large gatherings and it can be twenty-four seven. Also, the DBDIA, where, they've been working on it for years, and they have this beautiful vision of a restaurant row, you know, with multiple different commercial uses above and on the street. And the idea that adding this density has no financial impact or has no displacement is just a blatant lie, and that's untrue.
I appreciate, I appreciate the point you made about the highest and best use, and that's pretty valid. But what you're saying then is, and I just want you to just articulate why you feel that commercial and residential are incompatible uses in this context. I mean, as you mentioned it, I'm like, well, it's never a residential and a residential neighborhood, so.
Well, if we, if we have, if we have, if we have ten, if we have five thousand people lining up to go to an art exhibition on the second floor, and it's happening at eleven o'clock at night, there are going to be complaints. And if we have, you know, large lights flashing like, you know, the opening of a show, I mean, and that's going to be going into somebody's living room? I mean, what about, does that mean if we're going to have a five, a ninety-foot building, can we no longer erect fifty-foot kinetic neon signs because the light's not going to allow anybody to sleep in that building? So I just don't understand. There's no history of apartments on Granville Street. The history, I mean, we were renowned throughout North America for what was going on Granville Street. We should be acting to enhance and build on that century-old history. We shouldn't be bulldozing this through for just simple, ill-advised ideas that, you know, that aren't backed by fact, and we're entirely lacking in proper consultation with stakeholders, with the Downtown Business Improvement Association, and all the neighbors and existing businesses.
I'm going to stop you there because we're over the five for Counselor Fry. And counselors, if you find you're getting pretty close to the end of your five minutes, if you could, you always have the option of asking for a second round of questions. Counselor Hardwick, you're up for five.
Great. Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So you made, before Counselor Fry's question, you mentioned at the end of your commentary that you felt that there were misrepresentations by staff. And that you said, "Ask me." So I'm asking you. I caution you also that them spitingoids, as they would say, that's a serious statement. So I'll.
I'm not going to mince words. I'm not going to mince words here. On page sixteen of Proposed Amendment's Implications, it states financial. There, and I quote, "There is no anticipated land lift for any of the eligible properties based on the proposed amendment." So if we are increasing the density from three point five to five, then we are increasing it by one point five. So people buy density. Density gets bought and sold for heritage. And in our industry, we have what's called buildable. And the suggestion that density, there'll be no land lift, is, it's just a faulted. It is a blatant lie. And you can ask a hundred, you can ask the B C Assessment Authority, or you can engage a hundred appraisers or any person in the industry. The suggestion that increasing the density does not increase that there's no anticipated land left? I mean, that's, I mean, the city charges for that throughout the rest of the city.
I take your point. Sorry to interrupt you, but I've got limited time. So that's one. That it is absolutely, you're absolutely right. There, if you are increasing density, you are increasing land lift by definition to highest and best use. That's the way it's evaluated. You are right. And so I've made a note of that particular point. Point taken. Do you have additional points, as you were suggesting?
Yes, on the same page, there's no significant impact to character in terms of heritage density height or commercial continuity. We own the site on the corner of, on the corner of Hellickon and Davie Street, which is actually in this zone. If this amendment were to pass, we'd actually benefit financially. But we consider ourselves stewards of the street. We're not merchant developers. We're community builders. And I'm looking out for the best interest of the entire city and every citizen because, you know, that's what we're all about. To state that there's no significant impact to the character in terms of heritage density height or commercial continuity is not true. The building there occupies six thousand square feet. Now, if it were to develop as to what's proposed by the city here, that six thousand square feet of retail space, it'd be lucky if even two thousand were to return in its place. And because it's easier to finance residential and residential earns more, all the floors above would not be replaced with commercial. They'd be all replaced with residential. So to suggest that it would not impact, it would displace that business, and it'd be a total reduction of commercial area because developers, being developers, are going to go for what is the easiest to finance and what's going to render the highest profit and have the highest chance of being filled. And we all know the vacancy rates here in Vancouver, and we all, for residential, which are next to nil. However, commercial, we see all the empty stores and the empty offices, right?
Okay, I've got a minute left. So we've gone through land lift, we've gone through character. And now your third point is the commercial use versus the residential use. Is that it? And because I'm into my last minute in terms of misrepresentations by staff in the report?
Well, yes, I think it's misleading to suggest that sustainability and, or increasing the zoning, um, that residential, it's, is the only way to accomplish this. The same goals can be achieved a hundred percent exclusively through commercial use. But I'm, I'm really, the suggestion that the heritage and the fabric of Granville Street and the history would not change is, I, I'm sorry, I just cannot accept that that's a falsehood.
Really appreciate, and I'd love it if you could email, uh, the points there with council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, councillor Kirby Young up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mara, and thanks, Mr. Bonis, for being here. You said a couple of things that really stood out for me, and I, I, I want to tease it out a little bit. I know it's been touched on, but it's important. And that was when you talked about residential highest and best use and losing the commercial. It made me think about what we're experiencing with our industrial land, because so much of that was converted to other commercial use. And I'm wondering if you see a parallel here that with the continued kind of focus on residential and sort of conversion, um, from commercial to mixed use and, um, commercial into, into residential and housing, that we could be facing sort of a similar situation in terms of commercial space. Is that, is that sort of a reasonable analogy?
I think that's a various, various students' points. And, um, I worked, uh, when the city was engaging stakeholders and, and industry people, I worked on the jobs and economy team. I think it was about ten to fifteen years ago. And part of that was stressing the importance to retain industrial space and also jobs and economy space primarily on the Broadway corridor and surrounding areas and also in the downtown core. So I, I think that's a very fair analogy. And I'm just afraid this will open the gates to what happened in the past. Residential is, um, the highest in demand, it's the easiest to finance. And hotels are next to impossible to finance now, only to be even more difficult from COVID. But there was a moratorium of the conversion of office space to apartments. And that, you know, that was sort of triggered from a development that happened on Georgia Street. And there was a, and, and I'm afraid if we allow this to sort of, this opens the gate for a further attrition of commercial space, but also commercial space that is truly unique and creative and within heritage buildings. We can't create that, this streetscape, we can't create, you know, this, we can't create a Disneyland. So we really need to preserve and enhance and add the density and readapt these buildings for unique cultural and commercial uses, and we should not be converting them to residential uses. We need to retain this area.
Yeah, so on that note, in terms of, you know, sort of retaining, um, the uniqueness of the area and the uses, do you think that there's untapped potential in terms of that, those unique arts, cultural tourism uses? And that would be a better exploration, um, if you're trying to.
A hundred.
Using the land effectively.
Hundred percent. Absolutely, and I, I think, I think I, I'm really afraid of, of lower end, um, hostels and hotels. I mean, what's going to be left if all these, you know, if all these hotels are going to be bought out? Are we just going to have five to seven hundred dollar, um, hotel rooms? Like tourism is very important to this city. It's important, you know, for building our brand, attracting businesses, attracting tourism, and just for the mom and pop retailers and food and beverage. And I think we need to, you know, we need to grow culture and unique uses. And certainly, we should be upzoning for hotel use on this street. This is where it belongs, it's on mass transit. We can put residential anywhere, but we can't put hotels anywhere. And hotels, we've got the Canada Line, this is where we should be pushing for as much hotel, uh, space as possible. And hotels, you know, it's, it's all synergistic in, in, in terms of what it can do for both the retail, but also the arts, the nighttime economy, the gatherings, St. Patty's parades and so forth. And, and I, I love what happened, um, as Paul said earlier today at the Olympics. And we need to have an environment, uh, you know, to really push us to the forefront to, to build on our heritage and, and certainly not allow for the attrition of any of this commercial arts and culture space.
So, right, sort of recapping then, I hear you saying, we've got a shortage of, uh, arts, culture and performance affording spaces. And do you share my concern that with the identified quantified shortage of hotel rooms prior to COVID, that when this industry does recover, if you have taken those hotels out of the mix, that we're actually not going to have capacity to build our tourism sector back because we've now converted so many of those mid-range hotels into housing?
Absolutely, absolutely, they're going to be wiped out and land's going to be so expensive. And, um, and we're just killing our convention centre that we spent so much money on to build. But we, we need, we need these hotel rooms. And the, the financing of hotels is extremely onerous. And I can't even imagine what it's going to be like, uh, post-COVID, because lenders, lenders are just going to be averse.
I agree with you, Mr. Bonis, but that's my time, thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, that is it for questions. Yeah, and thanks, I, I've learned a lot from, uh, from this this evening and really appreciate you coming in, I, I'm sure we all do. So thank you again for, for coming, Mr. Bonis.
Thanks, thanks for your hard work to all of you, I really appreciate everything you do.
Thanks so much. Uh, speaker number thirty nine, uh, thank you, uh, speaker number thirty nine, Michael, uh, Milet.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, uh, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, um, yes, thank you. I'll try to be brief, I'm a south, uh, downtown resident, um, uh, been here for the last ten years or so. And just speaking anecdotally as a resident, uh, what's happened in the last year, I mean, albeit it's the pandemic, it's been a really tough year for everybody, council, housing, you know, camps everywhere, homeless, like it's a, it's a terrible situation, but we're almost out of it. And I think that we should just take a step back, take a look at what the Granville Street Entertainment Centre area looks like. It's the gateway to Vancouver, I used to drive for Yellow Cab, who take, take people down through Vancouver, Granville Street, over the bridge into Vancouver. People are expecting hotels, restaurants, um, culture, uh, entertainment, uh, not specifically housing downtown. And I think we should, like, take a step back. I think a couple of people have mentioned that there's a bigger plan for the gravel, um, you know, from Drake to Georgia. I think that's a really wise situation. And then on a personal note, the last twelve months have really made our livable, livability downtown really compromised. I just don't walk east anymore, I don't walk north anymore, um, other than around the seawall. I love walking downtown Vancouver, going to Chinatown for lunch, whatever. But I tell you, it's, uh, it doesn't feel safe, and I'm a guy. And, you know, I have neighbors who have moved out to White Rock, to North Vancouver. Seniors that are afraid to walk at night, and they never were a, a year ago. And they are justifiably, I'm telling them, you know, just be very cautious out here because there is a different element outside now. And I just wanted to express my concern. I, I know that this is a short-term situation, I know we're going to get out of this. But I do think that going back to what the Granville Entertainment Centre can be, it can be a wonderful place. It can be filled with not only expensive hotels, but affordable hotels too, um, for the average family traveling from, going to Alaska on a cruise or whatever, you know. So basically, I think just take a maybe step back and look at this area as a commercial zone with these uses. Also, you've got to remember, the, uh, Scotia Dance Centre is down here, where a lot of people are training to be dancers. There's the Vancouver International Film Centre on Seymour Street, uh, there's some independent dance studios. So there's, there's culture in itself downtown that we shouldn't overlook and take, and we should kind of nourish. And with, with, uh, social, you know, I just, I just think we should just take a, a, a step back and look at this area in its entirety again. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your, uh, time this evening, I don't see any questions for you. So, um, we'll move on to the next speaker, I have Dave Kershaw, speaker number forty, the last registered speaker on our list to council.
Hey, how's it going, guys? Uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Dave Kershaw, I'm the owner of Cabana Lounge at the corner of Granville and Davie there. Um, I've been in the hospitality business and actually own bars on Granville Street since nineteen ninety six. So, um, I've seen the ups and downs on Granville Street over the last couple of decades. And I do want to say that the hospitality industry, and I personally do, um, understand that, you know, homelessness is an issue, and we do support having it addressed. But, um, you know, the entertainment industry as a whole, um, and myself, we just don't feel that, you know, this is the best place to put some of Vancouver's most vulnerable people. My club is located underneath an SRO and across from the Howard Johnson. I've seen firsthand the challenges that can arise. Open drug use for one has just been gone bonkers over the last year. Um, I've had friends come in from out of town and come there during the day and make comments that they would never in a million years come back at night from what they've seen during the day. So, I mean, prior to COVID, I think the vision and the hope of everyone in hospitality that, you know, is that we could come with a proposal to, uh, encourage councils to have a vision for Granville Street, much like St. Laurent Street in Montreal, where there's bars and restaurants and boutiques and cool shops, and it's a tourist destination. And we really need that, I mean, our rents have gone absolutely crazy over the last little while. Um, last, you know, five to ten years, I pay almost thirty thousand dollars a month, um, rent. Um, frankly, we need to have a vibrant, world-class entertainment district there that attracts tourists. And I believe that Granville Street should and could be, um, you know, I think to check off your list when you come to Vancouver, not a place to avoid. So, um, I would therefore ask you kind of at least reconsider approving this amendment until further analysis has been done. And, um, yeah, that's really all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, uh, just checking here, I don't see any, uh, uh, questions from council. So I'll, um, uh, let you go and say thanks so much for participating tonight. And, thank you, uh, I don't see, uh, council, we don't have, um, any other registered speakers. So I am going to call the first time for, uh, speakers who wish to, uh, speak to this item. One eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, uh, ten sixty one four four five pound to get on the list. Uh, and I'll just, uh, clerks are informing me that we have, um, speaker, we have Kelly Tompkins, uh, on the line to speak to us.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can, uh, up to five minutes, please.
Okay, um, I'm, I am opposed to it, and I just want to, uh, express my feelings on what has happened, uh, the last year in our neighborhood. I live in Yale Town, and I have lived in Vancouver my whole life. And I, uh, worked, um, downtown at Seymour and, uh, Se, uh, Seymour and Robson for, you know, over thirty years. And I've, I've seen, you know, Granville Street go up and down, where, you know, there were times that it wasn't, you know, it wasn't the greatest place. But nothing like I've seen since, uh, last March, when the Howard Johnson was converted into a homeless, uh, homeless shelter. I know when you first, when it was first renovated, it looked, um, they sort of cleaned it up a bit. Well, if you walk by there now, it is, it is appalling, the landlords that are running that because there's wet, dirty clothing hanging out the windows, there is, um, you know, stuff that could fall on people's heads. Um, just, the, the whole building is just an eyesore. But not only that, we have people shooting up in, in, uh, Emery Barnes Park. The, the neighborhood isn't safe anymore, you, you know, um, uh, it's dangerous for women to be out, that's for sure. I've seen many different violent things happen at, uh, say, the seven eleven on Helmican and Homer, where, um, there's been violent, drug-fueled people, you know, one swinging a chain at people. And, you know, there's, we have to have a lot of police, uh, come down. And I just don't think, I think this, uh, this, uh, has to be changed. And, I mean, the, the rents are astronomical there, the property value's, uh, really expensive. So why on earth would you move people, more people into this? I mean, we're, we're at a breaking point, and I don't understand why, I, I see no logic in, um, in moving more homeless people into that neighborhood. Because imagine what's going to happen when people come out of the bars and things like that. And there's, you know, there's people with weapons, how many weapons did they find, um, in, in the Howard Johnson? So I don't know, it's, 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 the last year, our neighborhood has changed so, so much, it's not even recognizable. And our safety is put, is in jeopardy. So that's, um, that's all I have to say. I, I'd be very disappointed if, um, you know, people aren't heard, because people aren't happy about this.
Okay, uh, thank you so much, just checking here, I don't see any questions from, uh, councillors for you. So I thank you so much for, for calling in this evening. Uh, council, I'm making my second call now for speakers. Uh, the number, uh, is on the live feed and on Twitter as well as the, uh, the login, um, sorry, the, uh, the participant code. And, uh, clerks, uh, it looks like we have another speaker, um. Sorry, I'm just looking at the note here, uh, speaker number twenty one, Tamara Phrase with, uh, PowerPoint. Speaker, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Hi there.
Yep.
Yes, please.
Okay, perfect. So, sorry, I'm just trying to watch this on my laptop while I'm talking into my phone, but I actually don't see what I wanted, um, presented. But maybe I'll just start my little spiel here and hope that the clerk, um, puts it up.
Yep, no need to hurry you, uh, we'll just wait for the clerks to get it up and I'll just start your timer whenever, uh, whenever that's, uh, ready for you, clerks, do we have the, uh, yeah, I think I see it on the screen now. So, um, speaker, can you see it? Okay. It says, uh, it says, "Notice of proposed change to downtown, uh, official development plan and open house," is that, uh, the slide you wanted us to see?
Exactly, so, um, I guess.
I'll start your timer, go ahead.
Can you, can you guys all, okay, perfect, you guys can read it. Okay, because it, I mean, essentially what I want is, um, during my time, I would like you all just to take like one minute and just read that notice. Um, so I'll start, you can start the timer. And I will start off by saying that I oppose this proposal. Um, this neighborhood currently has the highest number of SROs and social housing outside of the downtown east side. And for the most part, this has not been a problem until the recent relocation of the Oppenheimer Tent City occupants into the Howard Johnson, the Holiday Inn and the Granville Street Hostel. All three of these hotels are within one block from each other. And since this relocation, there's been a drastic shift, a negative shift to our community. And there's been no improvement over the last twelve months. I would also like to request, um, that there be fair and even distribution when you're relocating people that are hard to house or anyone that has severe addiction or mental health issues. It, um, it's not fair to push hundreds, and if this proposal goes forward, possibly thousands of people into one small community. Um, so I've asked the clerk to post this proposal, um, which was sent by the city of Vancouver to local residents. Um, and if you could take a minute to read it, um, I've spoken with a number of people in my building, um, friends who live in the neighborhood, business owners, and everyone's really angry. People who received this notice in the mail had no clue what the impact would have. Um, this notice in, doesn't in any way inform residents that there's an intention to turn three parking lots on Granville Street, um, between Drake and Helmican into social housing. The language in this proposal is unclear, it's ambiguous, and I believe it was intentionally meant to be misleading. And for these reasons, that I'd like to request that this entire process start over. We want fair consultation and engagement with the community. You need to be direct, with clear, plain language and operate with transparency. If the intention was to build social housing on three parking lots on Granville Street, that will drastically, um, change, uh, the fabric of this neighborhood. So I, I probably have a few more minutes left, and I'd just like to ask if any council, reading this notice, um, if, if you think it's fair and clear that the intention was to build three, you turned three parking lots into social housing, if you think that this process has been fair. Because I think if you gave clear, proper notice, you would have a lot more than forty people on the line. I mean, this community has been devastated by the Howard Johnson and other hotels, the injection site. I mean, we're just getting it hand over fist. So I just want to ask. So I just want to ask if there's any council or mayor that thinks that this notice was enough notice and clear enough for this community to conclude that three parking lots are turning into social housing. I think this is completely unfair, and it needs to be redone.
Okay.
So nobody thinks it's fair?
Well, the way this process works is we listen to you and ask questions. It's a quasi judicial process, kind of like a court. So we're really listening to your testimony, and councillors can ask you questions if they feel so. But we don't, we don't answer questions at this stage. That's how the rules are in this hearing.
Okay.
Right. And I don't see any questions from councillors for you. So just wanted to thank you for bringing that to our attention and participating this evening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Just one second, council, I'm just checking with clerks. Okay. Hey, council, so we've had two calls now on speakers. So what I'm going to suggest is we, we take a five-minute break now and just wait for other speakers to call in, just to give folks a chance. And it is 7:31, so it's 7:36. Thanks so much. So clerks, informal, we have Cindy Wilson on the line.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Cindy Wilson.
Please go ahead. Yeah, we can.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. My name is Cindy Wilson. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I strongly support this amendment. I am also the parent to two amazing young adults on the cost of independence. I am the co-founder of two Vancouver-based companies dedicated to the design creation of affordable housing. Daily, I work with a dedicated and passionate team and consultants to make housing in Vancouver more affordable and sustainable. I am also the recipient, or my company is the recipient, of three City of Vancouver Urban Design Awards, and I would like to share some of my thinking with you. Thank you for your consideration. Even during the pandemic, land and construction costs have continued to climb, making any kind of housing construction more expensive. Vacancy rates have soared, or yeah, sorry, non-vacancy rates have soared, and Vancouver is already behind on its 10-year target towards the right supply of housing. The task is not getting any easier. Canada has never, I repeat, never achieved the commitment, the committed reduction in greenhouse gas emissions of the Paris Agreement. The construction industry accounts for 40% of carbon emissions. Mayor and councillor, we have a big problem. I speak to you today in support of the Downtown Official Development Plan Amendment, Area K3, and I encourage all council members to do the same for the following reasons. The amendment supports two of the most urgent issues of a generation, climate change and affordable housing. The report recommends support of a modest increase in density of 1.5 FSR if 100% of the housing is committed to social or secured market rental and employs the use of mass timber. There are other considerations in the report, but for brevity, I will focus on these two. To translate into real terms, an empty 75-foot lot on Granville Street within the Area K3 would currently be permitted to construct approximately 30 apartments. The ground floor use would remain the same as commercial. As a comparison with the support of this amendment, on the same-sized lot, up to 60 net-zero rental housing units could be built. This would be for families and the individuals who cannot afford to buy an apartment anywhere in the city of Vancouver. It would allow for people to work and live in the same neighborhood and to not have the need to own a car. This might be the mother or a teacher at the local Elsie Roy School, a barista at the neighborhood bakery who hands you your morning coffee and donut, the nurse at St. Paul's Hospital, or the people who live and work down the road in the entertainment district. Currently, we construct buildings as if they are one-offs, meaning with each building, we start anew. There's no efficiency gains to reduce costs from one building to the next. Mass timber sequesters carbon, and it is also the perfect local material for off-site prefabrication. This allows for a systematic and repeatable way to use technology to create net-zero urban housing. This is the only way to consistently meet our targets for both housing and sustainability, allowing more people to live and work in Vancouver. Council has promised to address the urgent need for housing supply while addressing climate change. The K3 amendment allows precisely for this while revitalizing Granville Street, bringing wonderful citizens to the area. And I will repeat, the commercial ground floor area would remain so. The industry is well-prepared, and with these incentives, will do exactly this. The time is now, council. The need to increase rental housing and to address climate change is today. We cannot kick this ball further down the road. I would also like to note that great cities have always been defined by the coexistence of business, culture, and housing for centuries. We do not have time to wait for this or for other plans for the Granville Street. Please support this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation this evening. I don't see any questions from council, so I'll ask the clerks, is there another speaker on the line? I think you've sent me a note. I have, right, I have Nadia. Sorry, my glasses on. Yes.
This is Nadia.
Great, okay, please go ahead up to, I have to ask, are you a resident of Vancouver?
Yes, I'm a resident of Vancouver, lived downtown Vancouver for 16 years.
Great, okay, that's all. Okay, please go ahead up to five minutes.
Well, so thank you for taking my call. As I mentioned, I've been a resident of Vancouver here in downtown, specifically in this building for 16 years. And I've never in my life, and I've made calls before to you, and I think you'll understand the frustration you hear in our voices, not just me, but everyone else that's called before that actually live here. So those that actually don't live here in the area, I suggest they don't make any comments of what's good and what's not good for us. We are at a breaking point. We don't need more social housing. There's more than enough. There's so many other places in the city of Vancouver that the Vancouver, the city of Vancouver owns land to build on and not on a Granville Strip, which is an entertainment area district, which is why I chose to live near it because it was easy access to go to the movies, to the movie theaters, to plays, to the symphony, to the Commodore. I enjoy that. Whereas now, in the last year, I, you know, I've never been so scared in my life to go out at night. There's a lot of disorder, as you've heard from other callers in the city, especially from, for women, it's very, very scary. I mean, I don't even know what to say anymore because I'm blurting out the same rhetoric. I've called City of Vancouver, I've talked to BC Housing, I've talked to our MLA, Hedy Frye with no response. I've talked to the police, I've talked to the people at the Murray Hotel, everyone. So I mean, to add more pressure into this pressure cooker that we are in right now, it's beyond comprehension. We don't need more of that type of housing here. I understand what you're trying to do. I get that. There's a large, open space elsewhere that would be better accommodated for these people that need housing. And downtown Vancouver, I'm not originally from here. I'm actually from another city in Canada. And the reason I came here is because like, wow, look at where we live. There's a city in between, the city, there's an ocean and mountains. It's spectacular. It's unique. This is why people come here and live here. And to, you know, and the gateway to the city is the Granville Street, the entertainment area. And I worked in the hospitality industry, and now we're just seeing it destroyed. So, and living here doesn't help in this core where it's already dense and we don't need more population of SROs where we're at capacity. And it's going on death years because we had the injection, we were objected to the injection site. And, you know, walked by there quite often to go to Yaletown, and guess what? They're not inside the injection site, they're outside doing it. So, you know, if you walk there with kids, it's not a good feeling. Like, how do you explain to your kids what's happening here? And a lot of families in our building have moved out since last year. There was two, three families with young kids just decided to leave. They loved living downtown. And so having this added and changed, I mean, I'm all for having hotels and entertainment and really what the street was designed for, and now residential. There's plenty of other spaces elsewhere in the city. And we're just, you know, out of what's and, we're just done with being trampled on and just put this pressure on us and being scared to live in our own neighborhood. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so just thank you for calling in. Clerks, I'm just going to ask if, okay, I don't see, we're going to make our third call for speakers. If you'd like to call in, it's 1-833-353-8610, 1061445, hashtag to get on the list. I'm just going to check with the clerks here. And we don't have any other speakers, council, so I'm going to close the speakers list. And so there are no, if you are no public comments received after 5:00 PM today, so we're going to close the receipt of public comments, move on to hearing, closing comments, asking further questions of staff, and making a decision. So I'm just going to go to staff now. Staff, do you have any closing comments?
Mayor Stewart, no, staff has no more closing comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks so much. Now, I'm just going to ask if council has any more questions for staff. And I see councillor Carr on the list. Councillor Carr, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions arising from comments that the speakers made. My first was the speaker that supplied us with a photo of the ad that was provided to the public in terms of getting their involvement in this issue that clearly stated rental housing on the ad. Now, our report, page six, does say where 100% of the residential floor space is secured as rental housing or social housing. And I'm wondering if you can comment on the fact that there is a discrepancy in that language. Social housing is in the report, and it is not, it was not in the advertisement. And could you comment on the concern raised by the, by the residents who spoke around that discrepancy? And if it has any material effect on this, this here, the legitimacy of the hearing?
Yes, this is Thomas Daly speaking from the Planning Department. That was an error that went out in the original mailer that was corrected online and was also corrected in subsequent mailouts that they go out.
Okay, so it, so all the residents who received that first mailout would have received a subsequent mailout that did include the word, the word "social housing"?
Yes, for the, for the upcoming public hearings, correct.
Okay, good. Um, now, in terms of participation of the public in this public hearing, I also did follow-up from one of the speakers who noted that the actual streaming version online of the, of this public hearing does include a specific set of timelines. And I looked, and indeed, it does say till, it's gonna go on till 11:30 tonight. At least that's, that the timeline is stated as such, not 10:00 PM. And so I'm wondering also if staff can comment if that, if that is a problem in terms of ensuring that we have received the breadth of, and the opportunity for public input, if the public thinks they still have till 11:30 and we end earlier than that?
Uh, the, that question, I think we'll have to let the clerks answer. That might be something with the tools, I think, was mentioned before. But I'll just add to your original question as well that, in addition to correcting the language, we also did extend our engagement period for an additional three weeks because of that error. But I'll let the clerks respond to your second question.
Okay, I appreciate having that information. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Through the chair, Counselor Carr, thank you for the question. The time that the speaker was referring to is actually the time we set for the streaming for the meeting. The time for the actual meeting is on the agenda page, which is correct. So typically, when we stream a meeting, we have to extend it in case the meeting does go past 10 o'clock. We want to be able to capture the whole meeting.
Okay, okay, so, all right, there's a difference. Perhaps we can, not necessarily during this public hearing, but we can actually have a discussion about whether or not the actual meeting time also should be posted at the same time as the streaming time, or the potential streaming, streaming time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Domonado, questions?
Uh, thanks, Mayor, and yeah, a couple of questions to staff. Um, at one of our previous council meetings, we already gave the direction around Granville Street planning process for that work to be undertaken. And I'm just curious if, could staff just give me an overview of what they're thinking in terms of a timeframe for that work?
Yes, I believe Susan Haye will be responding to that. Thank you very much, Counselor.
Not hearing, uh... Not hearing anything at the moment?
I think Susan's on mute. Oh, there.
Good evening, Counselors. Can you hear me? It's Susan Haye, Deputy Director of Planning.
You have quite an echo. Perhaps you could turn off the volume of the committee meeting?
Okay.
Still an echo.
I'm gonna go on my...
There you go, that's sounding... Oh, no, I can still hear me.
Oh, can you hear me now?
It's still, uh, still an echo.
Okay, one last try, my apologies.
Uh, still have a little bit of an echo in the background, though? I think you must have, uh, another device on in the background.
Um, good evening, Counselors. It's Susan Haye. Is this better?
Yeah, no echo now.
Okay, and my apologies.
Actually, sorry. I think perhaps we could, just for time, there might be another staff person on that we could, while we're getting that audio fixed?
Susan, can we try one more time? Susan, are you on the line?
In the aspect of time, I could maybe give an initial response and let Susan chime in. I think what we'd like to do in discussions, we would like to be able to bring that report back on the larger planning process and, and look at potential some timing vis-à-vis quick starts under the Vancouver Plan. And we can report back on that, uh, when we bring back with a, via memo in probably June or July.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Domonado. Is that helpful?
Um, yeah, maybe, maybe I'll just sort of push a little further on that question. Is, I guess there's a couple of questions related to that is, I'm trying to understand what's, would be within the scope of that planning work with respect to Granville Street? So what we can, because I don't think we've given direction or articulated any kind of parameters for that. So what is staff's initial thinking about what they would be considering? We've had, heard, for example, we've heard about hotels today, we've heard about commercial space, arts and culture. Um, and then I'm hearing kind of report back in a memo via June and July, but I'm getting, I'm looking for more clarity about, are we expecting to have a fulsome plan for this area, um, you know, by next year sometime, when there might be actually some decision-making coming to Council? So I'm looking for a little bit more, a sense of what would be included in that planning and what the timeframe is for it to come to Council for decision, to be clear.
So for your initial question about the scope, the scope will include a range of topics, as we've heard tonight very clearly. It's a complex street with a variety of users and stakeholders and multiple goals. And so land use would be very much a topic of conversation, cultural services, transportation, social service provision, as well as height, density, and conversations around heritage and conservation and how best to maintain the heritage assets moving forward. And so all those aspects will have to be looked at in terms of the, addressing the question of what the future of Granville should be.
Okay.
So that's in terms of scope, and that would be the proposed scope for Council to comment on.
Okay, so that, in terms of setting out a vision for Granville Street? And then in terms of a decision timeframe?
The, I think, from the initiation of the, the planning process, we're looking at probably 12 months would be the soonest we'd be able to tackle all that and bring that back. I think we've heard very clearly that there's going to be lots of public consultation and lots of dialogue about priorities and trade-offs and how best to advance the vision for, for Granville. And so we want to be able to take, make sure we take the time to do that in a proper way.
Okay, and then my, my last question would be, so what would that mean and look like then if this, um, public hearing report and recommendation is referred to that process? How would you approach that?
I'm sorry, Counselor, could you...
So, so if Council decides this evening that this should be referred back to staff, the recommendations that are made this evening, how would you build that into your work plan? What would that look like from a planning standpoint?
So I think that's the, what Susan was going to speak to, we would reply before the summer recess via a memo with recommendations for how to address that recommendation.
Okay.
Um, this is, oh, my apologies, this is Susan. I think my sound is working now. I just wanted to add that, yes, in the report back in June, July, when we're bringing forward quick starts on the Vancouver Plan, and just to the amended motion at referral on this report, we would, we would endeavor to report back on the timing of the program for Granville Street planning and any potential quick starts. And if it was referred back to staff, this, this K3 area would be looked at within that context, and it would really involve a new public hearing and a new referral as it pertains to K3.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna go to Counselor Dejanova now.
Thank you.
Counselor Dejanova?
Thanks very much. My first question to staff is on page 11 of the summary and recommendation on the March 11, 2021 report. It clearly states that there are a limited number of sites that would fall into K3 and be eligible here. I'm just wondering, what's the maximum number of units that we could see for social housing or for, and/or for market rental here? Under this, this change, if it were to be approved?
Uh, yes, this is Thomas Daly speaking from the Planning Department. So the maximum number of rental units?
Um, and social housing and/or a mix. I'm sure you've looked at both.
Yeah, um, I, we were anticipating mixed-use development for these three, potentially three sites, and we really don't know which ones are coming forward. I don't have an exact number, but we have...
Let's say all three were social housing.
Okay, if all three were social housing?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I take this and get back to you on this?
Uh, that's up to the chair. So, Mayor Stewart, should I, I can go on with my questions, but happy to move for a second round now in case I need it?
Yeah, just so you know, a second round of questions here, I believe in a public hearing would take a two-thirds vote. However, you could put yourself at the end of the queue and wait for questions, responsive. There's a number of...
I do have other questions too, and I know this has happened before. So could I just move for another round of questions? I hopefully won't need it, but...
Sorry, Counselor, Counselor Dejanova, I apologize. I do have those numbers now, I'm just had to take those up. Okay, apologies.
Thank you. No worries. Thank you.
Okay, um, yes, so what we anticipate is approximately 90 to 100 new units would be achieved with the recommended changes. It's hard, that's what we anticipate for rental units, just generally across those sites.
And I understand the definition very well of social housing in the city of Vancouver. I also understand that there are different phrases used by BC Housing and CMHC that could fall into social housing, but non-market housing or supportive housing, is that also considered social housing? Just to address the questions on record of some of the speakers.
Hi, Counselor, it's Dan Garrison from Planning and the Housing Policy Group. Yeah, that is correct. The definition of social housing, which you spoke to, is, is basically nonprofit-owned or operated housing, where at least 30% of the units rent to households with incomes below the housing income limits. But that's the minimum definition. So non-market housing, supportive housing, those are all subsets or subcategories of social housing.
Thanks, and maybe this is a question for you also, Mr. Garrison, or maybe, or sorry, Dan? Or maybe this is something you may want to pass on to a colleague, but in a situation where it's a nonprofit or charitable-owned building on land that is owned by that, by that nonprofit or charity, they could be property tax exempt, is that correct?
Uh, they, it, under certain circumstances, we have for seniors, housing in particular, we do have some tax exemptions, and the other tax exemption is for Class III supportive housing. So if the province by order in Council determines that a building is Class III supportive housing, then it will be determined to be exempt from property taxes.
Okay, and then how would, let's say you move, let's, let's say the scenario is 100 units, 100 people, whatever that is, and they're tax-exempt units, then the services used by those people, like for instance, roads, engineering, all of the services of property taxpayers, and I include those being renters paying rent, would the province be paying that to the city of Vancouver to cover those services for those people, for fire, police, engineering, all of that? How do we work that out?
Yeah, it's a good question, but the, those properties are tax-exempt. If it's determined to be Class III supportive housing, there is no offset in terms of the other services that I'm aware of, but we, generally, the definition of social housing is that, or of Class III supportive housing, is housing that the province is, is actually actively investing in.
Okay.
So there are contributions to the housing, yeah.
Thank you, that's all the time I have, so I'll leave it there. Mayor Stewart, I'm not gonna move for another round of questions at this point, thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, Counselor Boyle, up to five.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my question to staff relates to the low-emission building portion of these recommendations. And I'm wondering if, if Council decided to refer back the, the housing portions A and C, is there any value in still approving the low-emission portion of these recommendations? Or does it only apply really to the, the increased housing being proposed and so wouldn't do much on its own?
Yeah, this is Thomas Daly speaking from the Planning Department. Yes, I think you have a correct understanding, like the design guideline recommended changes could still apply if the two were separated, and it would apply to all buildings, not just residential.
Okay, that's helpful to know. So then I have what is maybe a process question, which is, could Council pass, decide to pass Recommendation B but refer Recommendation A and C back into that larger downtown plan conversation? I don't know which, which staff that's a question to. I just, I know there are some limits to what we can do in public hearing, and I just want to make sure that there would be a process that would allow for that path.
It might be a legal question, Counselor Boyle, because some clauses are contingent on other clauses. And now that you've raised it, perhaps we can leave it to legal to kind of think about it as we move through the remainder of questions. Does that sound okay?
That sounds just fine. Is there someone from legal on who...
Yeah, there is always somebody from public hearings, just not on standing rooms.
I'll go back to the end of the list, thanks.
Okay, or even if you were thinking of, will we get to the voting stage? I could, you know, it might, I don't know if it'll take that long, but I'll definitely make sure you have an answer before, before we get there.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thanks. Uh, okay, I've got Counselor Bly.
Thanks very much, Mayor. I did just a couple of quick clarifying questions. And it's regarding the report that talks about the Granville, sort of the broader planning process. So a report, so what I've heard from other councils' questions, and I just like confirmation and then have a follow-up, is that there'll be a sort of scoping report or a report back on the scope of what that plan's gonna look like by the end of this year, but the planning actually doesn't start until 2022. Can staff just clarify approximately how long, so if this, how long that planning process would take and be brought back to Council for a decision?
Yes, Neil Vershoe from the Planning Department. The, we anticipate the minimal amount of time would be 12 months up to 18 months to bring it back from the point of initiation. It's a significant interdepartmental planning process, and so we would need the support of engineering, ACCS, as well as several divisions within the Planning Department. So it, we anticipate 12 months to do that.
So looking at perhaps three-year, like 2024, something like that?
2020, yeah, 2023 would be when, if we initiate the very beginning of 2022, we'd be able to bring it to you in 2023.
Okay, okay, got it. And so what do staff anticipate will happen with these sites in the meantime? If this was, sorry, if this was not to pass or be referred to that planning process as it's been asked previously, what would happen with these sites in the meantime?
I should, again, Neil Vershoe from the Planning Department, I'll just caution about speculating, but the, given its history that the sites have remained parking lots for a long number of years, we wouldn't anticipate any change to happen in the, in the, in the near term.
Okay, and just to clarify, what would be the process, whether it's through the broader planning process or if staff were to respond to what we've been, you know, heard tonight, which is a request for more hotel, more art space, more commercial? What is that process for these particular sites?
These particular sites would would be part of the the larger area conversation. And so we would recommend having a consistent approach for how to deal with vacant sites versus a one off approach, for example. And and that would be the very focus of the conversation with with the public about how best to achieve the the vision for for Granville. What is the vision and how best to achieve it through land use and and density and height and such?
Okay, great, thank you. And it notes in the report that this the K three area is approximately two blocks. Can you confirm that the planning area on Granville Street covers, is it five blocks?
If the K one through K three is five blocks, that's.
Okay, 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 great. So it's a pretty significant portion of the actual street itself.
It is. It it runs from basically the the downtown CBD to South Granville to just above the loops.
Right, okay. And just one quick follow up. And you bring up the loops, and I was thinking about the planning process involved with the Granville Street Bridge. Was there any contemplation in that planning process as to what we would be doing with K three?
I would I might ask Susan, if you would be able to weigh in on that, my immediate responses know that the the zoning for the Granville Loops was established. And we we did not, it was not anticipated as part of part of that conversation.
Okay. Yes, this is Susan, and I would just confirm that Granville Loops policy area is south of here, and there is no conflict.
Okay, but they they sort of butt up against one another?
That is correct.
Right, okay. Okay, that's great. I'll leave it there. Thank you. Mayor, you might be on mute.
Here I am saying you're on mute, you're on mute, and I'm on mute. Sorry about that. Councillor Kirby, I'm up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. I I need some clarity on this notion of future Granville Street planning, because I I'm not explicitly clear. And I I'm going to ask also for the benefit of the public. So in recommendation C, it refers to council approving potentially a recommendation to report back with that scope of work for a future planning program. My question explicitly is what direction has been given so far, if any, with respect to a planning program? So I E, if this, so that's part A and then part B, if recommendation C does not pass tonight, is there therefore no direction for a planning program for Granville Street?
This is Susan Haid. My understanding is at the time of referral, recommendation C, which is not a bylaw amendment, was approved as a policy amendment or as a policy statement with further amendment by councillor Kirby Young. Essentially, recommendations, it includes recommendation C with an amendment further that staff consider any quick start actions or initiatives, including development proposals that would support economic stimulus and cultural revitalization for the area. So as was indicated this evening, the staff report indicates that our intent was to report back to council late this year on a planning program. And should council approve that, initiate it early next year. However, given the amendment to motion C, we are certainly further assessing that in light of reporting back on Vancouver Plan Quick Starts and recognizing council's interest and public feedback on this. So we will report back to council in a memo on that as as soon as possible.
That's great. So Susan, jumping in on that, then, I I guess what I'm trying to align in my head is that that amendment that I made was very explicit to the current purpose of the street on economic and cultural stimulus projects. In keeping with that, and what I heard described as a possible scope of a planning process was more of a an expanded definition, almost a kitchen sink of, you know, consideration for housing, for social services, for economic, for commercial, for cultural, et cetera. So that seems inconsistent with the previous direction that was given to me. So can you comment on that? And if council felt that that was the opportunity was really around maximizing the existing purpose of the street, wouldn't the prior direction still stand? I'm wondering how we got into this much more expanded scope, which is inconsistent with the amendment.
We would report back on the scope and certainly seek council's approval of that before initiating. But typically, for an area plan, we would undertake land use planning, so looking at all of the existing and potential uses. However, the emphasis on economic development and recovery, which was per the amended motion, would definitely be part of the scope of the work plan.
I feel like we're dicking around this, and I'm not getting to the heart of the question, because I appreciate that you're explaining general approaches to planning practices when an area plan is being undertaken, but that wasn't the amendment here. So I guess, to be clear, this appears to have morphed into a much broader planning process, which could result in a different vision for the street as I'm looking at C, another recommendation here, than the current vision for the street and maximizing that. Is that, am I explaining that clearly?
Yes, thank you for the question, councillor. We would be happy to, with that amendment, report back to council via memo and just indicate options. The the amendment speaks to economic development initiatives and quick starts. And so we would, we would respond to that, and we recognize the really the emphasis on the scope that council is speaking of. So yes, we we can respond per the amended motion.
Okay, so that's very clear on that piece of it, the economic and cultural. I guess, let me ask another follow up question on C, because this is really fundamental to this, so.
Just thirty seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. So on C, it really talks about a much broader scope of work. Why do staff feel that there is merit in maybe taking Granville in another direction from its already established iconic uses of commercial and entertainment and cultural street?
Just to quickly respond, the the scope that's referred to in the report is really reflecting the existing uses of Granville Street, the history, the iconic nature, its importance in terms of an economic development area. And it's just acknowledging that many of those uses are existing. And to achieve aspects of the potential vision based on some of the recent expressions of interest by the development community, we would want to look at the the relationship with land use and the economics to achieve potential vision and changes.
So I Thanks, that's the we're over time there. And I'm going to move on back to councillor Boyle. We do have an answer from legal for you, and I'll just, if they could go ahead, I'll just start the timer.
Yes, it's Jeff Greenberg from Legal Services. And yes, recommendation B can be voted on separately from recommendation A. They are independent of each other, and I think that it can exist in and of itself.
Okay.
So you can decide to sever A and B and vote on B independently.
Just while you're there with C then, their conditions. How does that one work?
The C that is in the summary and recommendations with with regard to the no legal rights or the C that was in the original report that talked about implementing the planning efforts.
I think I've I've perhaps I'll come back to myself and and not use Mr Boyle's time, so.
Mayor, since I have the time, I would ask the the C that we have in the recommendations before us states that recommendations A through B be adopted on the following conditions. So I think there is a question about if A is being referred and B is being approved. What's the wording of C? But maybe that's something I could just send an email to legal to make sure we're getting the language and approach legally.
My advice, my advice on that, councillor Boyle, would be that that could be changed so that you could sever it, so that each of those could act independently. A and B, which are adopted on conditions, are the standard language that we have about no legal rights being created. The fact that the approving officer will carry out those things. I think all of those could apply still with respect to A. They may or may not be applicable to B if it was severed. But I'm not concerned that it would, it would cause any legal ramifications if it existed independently for each.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, appreciate that. Those are all my questions. Thanks.
Hey, councillor Fry.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. And if there's no further questions, I was prepared to, I guess, move it, but then refer it and apply the referral amendment.
Okay, I didn't see anybody off the list, so sure, you can move it, and we need a second or then?
Second, councillor Dejshaba.
Okay, thanks. So now we're on the debate portion, so councillor Fry, you have moved it. So we'll put you on the list for the first five minutes.
Sure.
Yes, councillor Dejshaba.
I'm sorry, Mayor Stewart, I just wanted to know, did we move the motion and then the referral? Or because I'm I'm happy to second the referral as well. I just wasn't sure if we moved this language instead.
Just the motion is moved, just the motion is moved. Usually, we're trying to do it that way now rather than.
Just wanted to know. Thank you.
Great.
The referral.
Okay, sure.
Sure, well, we can just jump right into the referral part of it then, which I've submitted to the clerk. I I mean, I could get into all sorts of anecdotes about Granville Street and you know, going to the crack of joke and going to the Castle Pub and getting my first Mohawk on Poswell Square. But Granville Street has such a rich history, and and I I don't see this direction as congruous with the recovery that we're going to have to seek. I was down there just this weekend, and it every time I go down, it looks so incredibly bleak on Granville Street with all the boarded up businesses and the lack of visitors. And obviously, the clubs are all gone. And 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 I think we really do need to recognize that Granville Street has a very special place in our collective consciousness and in our city's history. I take Mr Bonis's comments quite seriously. You know, and when he mentioned this sort of bit about like, you know, basically, we wouldn't put bars to nightclubs in in any residential zones. In fact, we probably wouldn't put bars and nightclubs in most most C zones. But here we are contemplating residential in one of the only kind of zoned areas of the city that does support that kind of use, that kind of high intensity bar nightclub use. And I think that it's important that if we're considering COVID recovery and and what that might look like, that we don't sort of take two of the five blocks of the Granville Street planning area and and remove them potentially from the use we can already see from the the sort of south end where there is a lot more intensive residential development. It is has denuded a lot of the nightlife that was once there. And, you know, there was a number of bars, even between Davy and Drake there that are no longer sort of functional as a as of as that shift towards residential happens. And I think if we consider it further up to Helmken, we're really hamstringing the opportunities for that entire strip. So, yeah, so I have submitted that. I don't know if it's up on the screen. Oh, it is, too. And I'll just leave it at that.
Hey, thanks, councillor Fry. So I'm in the amendment queue now. I've councillor Dejshaba, councillor Boyle, and councillor Bly. Councillor Dejshaba.
Just a point of information through you, Mayor, to staff. I may, in my. I just want to make sure and and supportive of this, but for further consultation with stakeholders in the public, do you see the public to also include or in bringing this back to a future public hearing, would that include the residents that we've heard from tonight in the close and surrounding areas?
Sure, sorry, is that a question to me?
That's a question through you to staff.
Okay, sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, staff.
Yes, Neil Rashoway, the the quick answer is yes, it would.
Okay, thanks. And then just to follow up to that, the correction that was sent out on notices to the residents that was stated earlier, was that just changed? Or was it actually flagged as there was a notice sent before? The notice was not correct. This is the correction.
Yes, Thomas Daly, planning. Yes, we did address that. We corrected the change and stated this on the website. And that was also a part of the additional three weeks of engagement that we allowed for because of this correction.
But on the second mailer that was sent out that we were told about, did it actually say there was something incorrect on the first mailer? This is the correction? Something to that to that extent?
It did not. It just had the correct language that we intended to have on the original.
Okay, and that could possibly be addressed in this process as well to to give some time for feedback. Is that correct if this referral were to pass?
Yes.
Okay, very good. For those reasons, I do support the referral. And I will be supporting the referral. I hearing the angst and confusion of the public, along with, you know, the the difficulties in the, you know, broad scope of what social housing does mean and the fact that that's not possibly clearly defined. I understand it. I thought that, you know, Dan Garrison did an excellent job of defining it here in in under thirty seconds. But for the public, when they see that, they think that that means completely all supportive housing. That being said, for those reasons and and in hopes that we can engage more with all stakeholders, you know, some of the other comments that resonate with me, especially from the business owners. But, you know, I think that it was also well said by a speaker, I think it was Laura Balance, that, you know, that there was participation in this process, and she came representing a number of different organizations, businesses, and a group that has participated in the process and thought that this would be a part of it. So for that reason, I do support referral. I also, in supporting referral, understand that that's more work for our staff, so I don't take that lightly. That's something that, you know, I do see necessary, especially considering Granville Street right now is an entertainment district, is such an iconic place. And we've heard that the recent changes have been difficult for those living in surrounding areas and also for the business owners. So for those reasons, and just to be able to wrap it up, as I see a number of others on the list, I do support the referral. And I will be supportive of referring all pieces of this. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Boyle, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. I have mixed feelings on referring yet. Just, you know, really weighing, as I know others are, the need for these types of housing, this type of housing, rental housing and social housing in every neighborhood of the city. And the value in having that conversation as part of a larger process that we have ongoing so well. I would be supportive of seeing more rental and social housing in this neighborhood, as well as all of our other neighborhoods. I am comfortable supporting councillor Fry's referral, noting the importance of that whole street, whole neighborhood conversation happening. But I would like to see council pass recommendation B to add consideration of low operational or embodied emission, including the use of mass timber in this area. I think it makes sense to add that now while that additional housing and land use conversation gets moved into a larger process. You know, we know that buildings that do get built are in place for fifty or more years. And we have really tight and serious timelines to meet in terms of reducing our carbon emissions in buildings and in transportation particularly. And so I I I don't see a need to delay that move. And in fact, I think that it's important, having heard that it that we can pass that while moving the housing conversation, referring the housing conversation, I think it's important that we do that. So I have circulated a language for an amendment to the amendment that simply refers just shifts councillor Fry's referral to be a referral of. Just shifts Councilor Fry's referral to be a referral of recommendation A. And then adds recommendation B back in. So that we could pass recommendation B this evening and then alters recommendation C. Because we would be referring A back, recommendation C would just be conditions upon B. Sense confusing to say out loud, so hopefully Council seeing it in front of them.
Yeah, and actually, I have to check this because they're in public hearings, especially important we get this right. So. Council, I'm just gonna check with clerks and legal and I will come back in about five minutes. So that gives you a chance to kind of contemplate this as well. So we'll see you at eight thirty-five. Legal, that this is this is an order. So will anybody second this amendment?
Second.
Sorry, who was that?
Councilor Dominado.
Oh, thank you, Councilor Dominado. Right. So does anybody want to speak to this amendment? Councilor Carr.
Hi, thank you. My only question is that. That regarding the. It could be, it's really a point of information through you, if that's possible.
Sure.
Task, great to staff. That the consideration of mass timber doesn't mean a doesn't mean a requirement of mass timber and if so. Would that support the the types of buildings that might not be residential, but if the. Subsequent plan, if this amendment passes and just goes through further review and. And there is an intention that comes out of that to to focus on, you know, more entertainment uses, for example. So I'm just wondering if mass timber is appropriate for those kinds of land uses beyond just the residential.
Yeah, Thomas Daly here, Planning Department. I guess the the short answer is that it wouldn't be a requirement. It's something that we would encourage and try to incentivize. But and obviously it would be, you know, determined on a site by site basis, depending on the type of development and the usage.
Got it. Okay, that's great. Then I'm happy to support the this amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman Fry.
If I could also ask a follow up question of staff. So when we say incentivize. Does that by virtue by that same context kind of? Disincentivize. Use that may not be compliant. I'm just looking through building codes that seem to indicate that occupant loads for mass timber construction, for instance. Wouldn't support like your typical nightclub use. Is that an accurate assessment? And? Also, when we're talking about the Granville Downtown South area, we're talking about the 1200 through 800 blocks. Is that correct?
The downtown, so the downtown South Granville Street guidelines also include the. All five blocks of Granville Street, the K1, K2, and K3 that we're referring to, correct? So maybe, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, and so and so mass mass timber construction. Wouldn't necessarily support occupant loads that we would see in a nightclub, for instance. And when we say it's not a requirement, but it it would be incentivized, what does that look like? What is the opposite of incentivized?
And maybe I misspoke. It's something we would encourage through these developments. And I think we're looking more broadly across the city for incentives. But in this area, again, it would be a site by site. You know, determination depending on what would be coming forward. So I don't know about specific loads for nightclubs. But it's it's again, it's something we're trying to promote. And I think just more generally speaking, guidelines. Are not necessarily kind of hard rules. They're something we use to guide developments through design. And through the livability. So there's kind of a number of criteria that would adhere to these to each development. And obviously. You know, something with residential versus a nightclub usage, there's kind of different guidelines for each.
Right. And and we do have incentives right now for pursuing mass timber typically across the city.
Yes, you know, and I don't want to kind of speak out of turn here, but I do, I'm aware of incentives in terms of. Exclusions for these this type of construction material. So obviously, it takes up a lot more floor space. So that's that's. Built into into those requirements.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I'll just speak to the amendment. And I certainly support the intention and I support. You know, further low carbon construction and and the mass timber stuff. And I know. We're enthusiastically embracing that, not just as a as a city, but as a province. However, given that we're only talking about five blocks of Granville Street in in this proposal. I'd be more comfortable seeing the entire thing referred back for further work that contemplates things like nightclub use and occupant loads. And how we may find alternate means to to deliver on our a lot of. Our objectives in these five blocks, but as part of a comprehensive plan for the entire five blocks, not sort of piecing it apart in bits and pieces. So I I won't be supporting this amendment reluctantly.
Thanks, Councilor DeShalva.
Thanks. Similar to Councilor Fry, I'm I'm concerned that there's already been some confusion, which. Well, I should say I won't be supporting it similarly to Councilor Fry, but perhaps for some different reasons. I'm not going to, you know, put words in in Councilor Fry's mouth. But I do think that it's important that we consult not only with industry, but that in referring this back to staff, that there is a clear referral back to staff. And if we're truly going to ask staff to do further work to engage with the public and to. Consult stakeholders for their input and this affects them, I think that it's it's probably best that we refer back the entire. All of the recommendations. So for that reason, I won't be able to support this. I am comforted by the fact that there are guidelines right now where currently this could be explored. And I'm also concerned that, you know, to some of the comments from people, such as I'd mentioned before, you know. One of them that really sort of stays with me is the comments from Laura Balance, who spoke on behalf of. A number of different businesses that this, in fact, would be something that they they would like to move forward with. Sort of as they they consider things more broadly in the process, they've already been participating in. But also in in the direction we're giving staff to refer this back. So for that reason, I will be. Not supportive of the amendments, the amendment, but supportive of referring all recommendations back to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to Councilor Kirby.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I have a couple of points of information through you to staff, if I could.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. And and the first one, I've got one on the original referral, but I'm gonna stick right now on the amendment. Can you and ask this question in the context of the permit and DBL Development Businesses and Licensing Discussion that Council had last week? Conversation that came up with respects to multiple, complex and sometimes competing. Policies that don't have a defined hierarchy. Can you advise if this? Part B with respect for the part with respect to use of mass timber has been considered in the context of the expanded liquor. Report that Council just passed in order to align Vancouver's capacity with the BC Fire Code. And therefore, could those policies be conflictual? Can you advise if that consideration has been given or we're layering on potentially another potential? Non-defined hierarchy of policy here?
This is Susan Haidt. The the Vancouver Building Bylaw has already undergone amendments to support mass timber. However, the specifics of your question with regard to the relationship to liquor license. And the earlier question on nightclubs would ultimately be something that would be subject to a building permit. But staff would have to get back to you to respond specifically on that question.
Okay, so thank you. So hearing that, and to me, it doesn't make sense either to pass this without understanding. Referring this piece also and understanding the impact on that other. Priority policy piece that we just passed. I would like to understand how they work together. And I think that it's really important. When council are taking decisions moving forward, that we are always looking at them through the lens of are we completing? Creating complex policy layers or a mechanism to ensure that there is clarity in what trumps or what comes first in the hierarchy and how they work together. And I'm not hearing that right now. So for those reasons and not wanting to compromise that work that was just done and significant and important work by staff that is fundamental to the survival of the hospitality industry. I don't want to do something that compromises without having more information. The execution of the expanded liquor capacity seats. So I'm not going to support it at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Weeb.
Yeah, I will be supportive. I think that this is the direction we need to go as a city. I think considering low operation embodied emission buildings in the way we. Design and build is critical. I know that the new building. In Lower Lonsdale is going to have a restaurant with a full commercial kitchen, one of the first ever. And I think we need to be showing that. Type of initiative here in Vancouver and it might have a dance studio as well. And so I think. When we look at these opportunities to reduce cost and to utilize new technologies, it's exactly what we need to do to be creative, to better support the culture. Creative elements of this street. And incentives would allow builders to create creative new spaces, which is something we heard from some of the public today. So. It's an option. It's not mandatory, but I think it's the right direction as we try to find ways to build back better.
Thanks, Councilor Dominado.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a point of information through you to staff.
Sure.
And it's just to follow up on, I took a look at the appendix B with the draft guidelines for sustainability. I'm just curious if staff could comment on where else in the city we have similar guidelines. Around use of mass timber and other low emission considerations.
Yeah, this is Thomas Daly speaking, Funding Department. This is one of the first kind of areas that we would be exploring this specifically in the guidelines like this. I I think it was recently explored as a part of the I3 zoning in Mount Pleasant for some of the industrial and commercial uses in that area. But we're currently looking for a number of opportunities throughout the city where we can continue to apply this into our current policy and any new policy coming forward. And we just saw this kind of as a unique opportunity, you know, meeting. Housing needs with mass timber goals of the city.
Okay. And just to follow up to that, if I just may ask, is there any thought or planning going into looking at this more holistically as opposed to? I mean, I may say this respectfully as piecemeal, as policies are coming up for a consideration review, are we thinking more at looking at this if design guidelines for. The whole city in this context? So we've obviously made the changes around mass timber, which I support and I think is fantastic. Big advocate of using mass timber. I'm just curious if we're looking about this and doing that policy shift. Across the board as opposed to sort of one offs like this.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I'll just correct myself before I said I3, I1C is the new zoning in Mount Pleasant. But yeah, no, there is a, you know, program in sustainability. We're looking at this citywide. Obviously, doing this kind of, you know, this is only really two blocks. We're looking at quite piecemeal. Will take some time and, you know, through these kind of innovative pilots is really what this is. We're just learning the kind of legalities of this where we can really kind of push further. And so any learnings from this will be hoping to to spread citywide.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Swanson.
Yeah, I support amendment to the amendment. We're we're in the middle of a climate crisis that needs to take precedence over things like entertainment. And besides, the motion only talks about consideration. It doesn't talk about. People having to use embodied mass timber. So I think it's a good step in the right direction and we should do it.
Thanks, Councilor Swanson. Councilor Boyle?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll just close on this to say I am, to be honest, a little bit baffled at the opposition to this. This recommendation B is not in conflict with the priorities. Of council around the entertainment district, but it is, I think, an exciting opportunity to. Pilot an implementation of a broad policy objective that council has. Has pretty unanimously directed. There was a lot of excitement about the idea of mass timber. These are important building considerations. And. And to delay an early implementation of this important policy. By a year or more for this larger plan doesn't make sense to me when it's not in conflict with the other conversations happening around. What would get built there. Delaying this doesn't mean that. Nothing will get built and passing this wouldn't mean that more gets built. It's about if there's building happening, how are we doing it? And how are we doing it in line with? Our very serious climate targets that, quite frankly, I think on every vote we make. We need to be clear that we're continuing to commit to and that we're that we're capable of doing a long. to commit to and that we're capable of doing alongside all of the other work that is a priority for us. So I I hope that this passes. I think it sends a disappointing signal, if it doesn't, about our commitment to doing these things in conjunction rather than in conflict with one another.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else on the queue to speak, so let's call a vote on this one. Councillor Dejanova. Okay, let's see now. That has passed with councillor Kirbyon, Bly, Hardwick, Frye and Dejanova in opposition. Okay, we're going to go back to the amendment queue because we have a referral. Councillor Boyle, you have about two minutes left. Anything else?
No, I'm happy to leave it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Bly.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, so I'll just speak in my final comments for this this item as it's being referred. So I appreciate those who took the time to call in, of course, and share their perspective with council. In consideration of this decision, I think we need to allow in every discussion where it comes up, the provision of below market housing in all areas of the city. In addition, the definition of social housing is unclear and we've seen that misinterpretation underscored in considering this rezoning and I think largely what we heard from the public. That said, I will support the referral for two reasons. First off, businesses and patrons that make up the essence of Granville Street as an entertainment district have not and will not experience Granville Street in the context of K one, K two and K three. It is the Granville Strip. And therefore, we need to consider these amendments in the same context as those who use it, which can happen in the broader planning process. And second, that the amendments proposed would affect forty percent of that strip. A significant portion in any decisions made now will inform future planning of this area. So I support collaboration and consultation. I think that we've heard that loud and clear with stakeholders in that process, one being, of course, the Downtown Business Improvement Association, who continues to engage and work with the city on a number of key issues, including but not limited to supporting the economy and increasing housing of all types. So I think we need to spend our time in pandemic recovery, seeking new solutions that support the Granville Entertainment District as a critical part of rebuilding the entertainment and hospitality economy. So I'm happy to support the referral and thanks to council for being there for it.
Thank you. Councillor Kirbyon.
Yeah, thank you. Just sort of trying to confirm where to start here in terms of providing clarity on comments. I did not originally support this referral to move this forward because to me it was very clear, even at that stage, that this wasn't the uses that Granville Street was intended for. And I think it was also quite clear that there wasn't community support for it. Granville is unique. It's iconic. It's got a legacy of history in the city of Vancouver. We don't have, we have sort of neighborhoods that have that are unique across the city. They each have their own personality and definition. They have little neighborhood gems scattered amongst them, but we don't really have anything else other in terms of an iconic destination, arts, culture and nightlife area in the city of Vancouver. And that's what Granville is and represents. And I think that that vision is clear and established. There are many stakeholders committed to that. I think there's untapped opportunity to realize that existing vision. And so that's why I didn't support referring this to go down the path of housing because it was clear to me that it wasn't a fit for something that holds such a unique space here. I think some of the comments that we heard from a number of speakers and particularly around the scarcity of commercial and unique sort of incubator, cultural innovative use space was really struck a chord with me because it's very similar to the discussions that we have now, that we have lost a lot of our industrial land and we're trying to make it back up. And we will always just have the one Granville Street. And I don't think that every street has to be everything in the city. I think that they can be something unique in their own right. Granville already has its own unique identity. It's really a question about, you know, sort of polishing it off and bringing it to life and modernizing it and moving it forward and having enabling policy that will allow expanded and more creative arts, cultural entertainment and hotel use. I think that is the sort of the ideal vision for this area. But here we are and we've gone through a pretty significant exercise. And I wish that we actually hadn't got here because I think it's caused a lot of angst for the community that we didn't have to have because had we not referred it in the first place, then we would have gone through this process. It has caused a lot of angst and confusion. It has taken a lot of staff time. And it's not moving forward. So that's a sort of a personal disappointment for me. At the time, I did make the amendment that was referenced by staff around quick starts to maximize economic recovery, but it was very specific to look at those in terms of economic and cultural and arts opportunities to fit with things like the making space for arts and culture, the lack of performance and production space in the city, the ability to kind of provide unique creative and cultural spaces and experiences. And that's what I think where the real opportunity is. I think that's what the residents of Vancouver will be excited about. I think that's what makes sense to build on the efforts of sort of the operators who have invested so heavily in this street. So I want to be really clear. I'm very thoughtful about what a different planning process looks like. I would have really preferred councils to just vote this report down as opposed to referring it because my clear sense of what we heard from staff is that amendment was made, staff have an intention to sort of bring forward an option for broader planning process already anyway. So I think that that is happening and it would have. And I think it's a much clearer process and a signal to people because I think people get lost in obviously our kind of machinations of process. And it sends mixed signals out there. I think voting it down would be preferable to sort of make a statement around we're supporting the intent of what Granville Street was intended to be, what people want it to be, what it can be, and bring it back to life. I love the idea of the restaurant row. I think we could have a great discussion around making it more pedestrian friendly street. We've seen the importance during the pandemic of dining outside. What better area to sort of really build on these uses so that you have the outdoors and the street level and sort of, you know, multifaceted and multi-story, all of those dynamic experiences kind of coming together and coalescing in one place. And it could, I think it could be a really exciting vision. But that's where I think the energy needs to be spent, not on this potential could Granville Street become another sort of mixed use, something for, you know, for everybody, try to check a lot of boxes off as opposed to let this one great street be one great thing and let it shine. So I'm going to be really clear about that. That's what I'm going to be looking for when we have a scope coming back because I'd rather put our energy into trying to realize that vision as opposed to spending a lot of time and effort around a planning process for the street to be something other than what people have already told us it is and they want it to be. And so I'm hopeful that staff are heeding those comments and we are spending our time wisely, which is limited and our staff time, but also our social capital with the public and with our stakeholders. And that's really important. So thank you.
Councillor Frye, after five.
Yeah, I appreciate that this is going back for further work. I don't know that we were in a position to legally deny referring this to public hearing based on what we were presented. But I do think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And as I look at the Granville Street Downtown South guidelines, those were first adopted thirty years ago. And I think a lot has changed and a lot needs to be reflected with regard to my choice, my vote not to support adding the low carbon buildings. It's not out of a lack of support for low carbon buildings. I think we've made clear indications that we support that throughout the city. But for me, I would far prefer a clean planning process for these only five blocks. And I'm frustrated that we've originally singled out two of five blocks of the only kind of blocks like this in the city and did a piecemeal approach. I think that it's far better to take a full overview of what the street is, what the street could be and really, really get thoughtful and creative and wrap that into recovery, wrap that into a green recovery, but do it in in a complete kind of way instead of isolating it off. I think having watched Granville Street evolve over my lifetime, certainly, I think some of the planning decisions that have been made more recently around Granville Street, particularly the adding of residential at the south end, I don't think have been successful. And I see some of the stuff that we're we're now seeing the repurposing of the Cineplex for the giant gaming facility. And we're seeing new businesses moving up into the into the sort of north end of Granville Street there and 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 a lot of new opportunities for job creation, office space, entertainment space, restaurants, local service. And they're suffering right now, obviously, as a result of the pandemic. So I'm hoping that that staff take this cue and really come back and look at the opportunities that these five blocks in downtown Vancouver present themselves and 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 work with the community, work with the businesses, work with the downtown BIA. And let's figure out what we can do with it. I also just want to highlight that in a lot of this conversation, the concerns and sort of misrepresentation of what social housing is or isn't, I think really reflect on on a motion that we passed here at this council earlier and some of the concerns we've had around how we define social housing. I think we heard from a lot of folks, some unfortunate messaging that suggested this, you know, that they were opposed to to low income people or they were opposed to supportive housing in the community. We know as 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 a council and as staff, we know actually what social housing is. And under our own city's definitions of social housing, that is housing that's owned by a not-for-profit or government at which thirty percent is below BC housing income limits. We know that that's what it is so that it's it's market and and a high-low end market. It's not at all supportive housing. And I think that we really have a duty of clarity and transparency and sort of dissemination of correct information to the public because clearly a lot of folks came to speak to this under some very false impressions of what social housing is and isn't. And I think it really creates an unfortunate polarization. I think it may achieve some target goals as far as numbers, but I think it's an inaccurate representation of of what was being proposed here. And I think that's important to take a lesson from that as well. And hopefully, when we come back with a more comprehensive approach to planning these five blocks of Granville Street in downtown Vancouver, we can consider that as well, how we define social housing. That's it for me.
Thanks, councillor Domino.
Thanks, Mayor. And and thanks to the staff for their work on this. And thank you to councillor Frye for bringing forward the referral. I think it is an appropriate response to these staff recommendations in light of the public feedback that we've heard, not only for residents, but also from businesses in the area that we really need to take more time. And I wholeheartedly agree with my colleagues that we really need to put this in a larger planning context and and not simply move forward piecemeal with a a housing strategy, but looking at this street holistically. And my colleagues have spoken to the iconic nature of Granville Street. And I know my family, both the Italian and Greek side of the family, have rich memories of Fonzie's photos. My favorite photo is of my father when he was fifteen years old. My great aunt worked at the Peter Pan Cafe. And it is an iconic street that has a very long history and has changed and evolved. But when I think about what's been put before us, it is limited and narrow in scope. And I appreciate that we did adopt at a recent council meeting and given direction for a broader planning framework. But when I think, we're talking about five blocks as we noted, but the way my mind works and the way I look at this is we almost need to be thinking, and don't worry, there's no amendment coming. We need to be thinking about the fact that we are going to have the Broadway Line and a transit station on the south side of the Granville Street Bridge. We've committed to upgrades and renewal of Granville Street Bridge to make it more pedestrian and bike friendly. And and now we're talking about the south end of Granville Street and all these things are connected. And I know right now it's hard to envision because we're in the middle of a pandemic and things have slowed. And we don't have the animation and vibrancy that our city normally has. But once all these pieces come online, that area is going to look very different. And so from my perspective, we do need to think long and hard and act boldly around this part of the city. And for me, the words that come to mind are vision, opportunity, renewal and recovery. And I am I'm excited by what opportunities this affords us. But I do think we really do need to pay attention to the heritage, the historical nature of the area, the arts and culture, music, entertainment aspect of this neighborhood and this streetscape. And so I'm I'm I think this is the right thing to do. And I do appreciate the conversation that's also centered this evening on a different theme around supportive housing and what that looks like, what that means. I do spend a lot of time in conversations I'm having with residents right now about a variety of housing proposals around education, around what that looks like, how a social housing works, supportive housing. And I think we have some work to do there in terms of both the public and ourselves as an organization. But overall, I'm I'm pleased that we are referring this back for some further work and to really look at this area more holistically.
Thank you. Councillor Swanson.
Yeah, so the second to the last speaker to me was pretty persuasive. I think if it were up to me, I would vote to accept the recommendations, but referral is better than defeat. The speakers did raise some good points. I think we do need to put the appropriate words in our notifications so that speakers don't expect to stay till ten thirty. We could say something like council meetings usually end at ten, but can go beyond that. I think we do need a plain language glossary that we hand out to people doing consultations or people involved in in hearing, public hearings, where we define what FSR means and where we define what social housing means if we aren't going to change the definition of social housing. So those were some things that I learned listening to the speakers. I am puzzled by the kind of glorification of this area. I know pre-COVID, the biggest, the most frequent subjects or topics that we had to deal with relating to this area was how come there are so many drunk people fighting out in the street? And how come do we need so many cops there to get a handle on things? And we even had people come to council talking about sexualized violence in that area. And iconic was not the word. We all went to an all, or not all of us, but a lot of us went to an all candidates meeting, I remember, before we were elected. And the big issue was what can we do about drunkenness in the Granville Strip? So let's not get carried, totally carried away with this iconic stuff. I think if we're going back to do more consultation and more visioning, we need to kind of try to do some visioning that will prevent the type of of atmosphere that was there before. And I just have to say, as the author of a book over twenty years ago that was called War Bashing, The Politics of Exclusion, I am pretty appalled by the some of the comments about the about that people think how bad it is to have social housing in their neighborhood using words like saturated. We don't use the word like saturated when we're creating a rich ghetto like the Canby Corridor. We don't say it's saturated with upper income people.
I believe councillor Dejanova is on for Point of Order. I live in the rich ghetto of the Canby area and I can assure you I do not fit that criteria.
That's not really what a point of order is about.
Characterizing neighborhoods with rhetoric and language that is divisive and characterizing the character of individuals.
And what would you like me to do?
Just caution council on language. I think that we've had issues with this before.
So I'm trying to point out that if it's okay to say about one group of people, it should be okay to say about another group. I'm not saying that I agree with doing it.
A little different, I guess, councillor Swanson, is that, you know, it's my job to caution the public and I do it frequently on it, but really as council, we're under slightly different standards. So so I get this. And maybe we could talk about this at the next chairs meeting exactly about because this this actual items come up a bunch of times that this specific word ghetto. So if we can leave this for this evening, perhaps we can just have a further debate and I can come back to council on with my thoughts about that.
Oh, Point of Order, Mayor Stewart.
Yes, councillor Dejanova.
I do have a different point of order in our procedure by law. And that's why I feel it is important. I did not hear unless we'd like to take a recess and
Your volume isn't working.
I used by any of the speakers or poor ghetto. So under six point one, section rule on this, this phrase and characterizing people who live in the Canby area. six point one section rule on this, this um phrase and characterizing people who live in the Canby area um as uh as they've been characterized.
Yeah, we, we, this is the second point of order on the same uh the same issue.
I know, I would like you to, I would like you to rule on it. Okay. As long as it will be on the record, Mayor Stewart, six point one B. Thank you.
Okay, uh councillor Swanson, if you want to continue.
Yeah, I just will support the amendment on the grounds that referral is better than defeat.
Okay, thank you councillor Swanson, councillor Hardwick. Go ahead. Oh, you're on mute, I think.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um I take a different perspective. Um I was persuaded by much of what I've heard and um interested in some of the speakers, particularly uh Carrie Bonas, I believe it was, that talked about some of the erroneous underlying assumptions uh that were in the, in the staff report around uh anticipated land lift, about changes in the character of the area. Um and overall, uh the diminishment of commercial activity in favor of residential development. At the end of the day, developers are always going to develop what makes the most money for them. I always like to point this out. They're not doing it out of the goodness of their heart. It makes economic sense. Um so on that basis, I would have uh been more prepared to uh, to reject the recommendations of this report. But uh given the fact that there is an amendment that has uh referred this back to staff, I'm inclined to support it. Um and again, uh the frustrating thing is, is hearing reports that are based on uh you know, again, every time I hear the Housing Vancouver uh targets repeated as justification, which have been admittedly aspirational as opposed to evidence-based. It's a, a, a little hard to take seriously. Um so uh because of those things, I will support the referral and we'll see what happens when it comes back to us next time.
Thank you very much councillor Hardwick. Um we're gonna move to a vote on this one. Councillor Dijonel. There we go. So that is unanimous. Thank you very much, council. I, I learned a lot from that uh session and it was nice to sit and think about Granville Street a bit and what it could be. So that's uh, that's quite useful. Thank you. Yeah, councillor Dijonel.
I, I just wanted to let you know I'm, I'm losing my connection in and out and I will call in if I lose it any further, but I wanted to note that I have been and will continue to have it on another uh monitor, listening as well. So I miss nothing. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Okay, council, we're at quarter after nine and um we have a whole nother giant item to uh deal with on this uh, this slate of uh public hearings, uh which is um Fraserlands. Um so my thought is uh that we're probably not going to get to speakers this evening, so it might be worth being to uh just saying that at, at the moment, we do have a, we have a staff presentation. We have a, we have a um uh we, and we have uh uh count, uh questions from council to staff. So even if we did uh hear from speakers, it'll only be from a few, I think, if we're gonna stop at ten o'clock. Uh so my suggestion is we can just let speakers know now that we would be coming uh that it would be at the next meeting where we'll be hearing from speakers. Yeah, we don't, I don't really need a, a move on it. Yeah, we could just, it'd be tomorrow at six PM uh that we would begin to hear from speakers. And that would get us through the presentation and, and the first kind of round of questions. So uh I think kind of not hearing any objections to that one a quarter after nine on a long day. So uh I'll uh now just start in on this item and just if the clerks could inform uh speakers that it would be tomorrow at six PM. Uh so I'm just gonna ask first before we start on this item, uh if uh any council members wish to declare of a, a conflict of interest, uh please let us know now. Otherwise, I'll just have the clerk read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by the general manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the East Fraserlands official development plan to add one thousand four hundred one hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred, six hundred and four square meters of permitted floor area to increase the package of public amenities and to better align with the city policy approved since two thousand and six. Consequential to the EFL ODP, an amendment to CD one five six seven for the waterfront precinct is proposed to increase the building height maximum from twenty-four to twenty-eight stories. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Thirty-two pieces of correspondence and support, including two petitions with two hundred and fourteen signatures, seventeen pieces of course, sorry, seven pieces of correspondence in opposition and one piece of correspondence dealing with other ap- aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to five PM today.
Thanks so much. Um great, so um okay, uh so we have our Kirsten Robinson here from uh community planning to uh take us through the presentation. We, we have a lot of folks that want to speak to this, so uh i- it's uh, yeah, so we should see the presentation and um whenever you're ready.
Planning staff, are you on the line?
Yep, we're working on it. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can hear you, yeah.
Step one, you can hear us. We're working on the presentation right now.
Okay, great. And I'll just let you know when it's up on the public screen. There it is. Okay, it's up on the public screen now.
Is it? We can't see it.
We can hear you whispering too. There, okay. So of course, there's two screens, right? We have up on the public one and now we uh, now you can see me on the internal screen.
Okay, can you see the presentation now?
I'm still looking at myself.
You have the slides in front of you because the clerk could just advance them if that's easier.
W- w- we have them on the uh orange cone on the public screen, but we don't have them on the uh, on the webex.
Okay, let's try again.
Okay. Still me.
Okay, let's try one last time. Is it possible to have a five-minute break, two-minute break while we get our presentation up and running?
Uh sure, let's uh, let's do that. Uh um give us a couple of minutes and we'll uh, we can take it offline for a few minutes, clerks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Technical troubles. So the cover slide. Um good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kirsten Robinson. I'm a senior planner in the Community Planning Major Projects Group. Next slide, please. Uh this report concludes a comprehensive review of the East Fraserlands, for which development has been underway for the last ten years. This report includes two significant pieces of work. Part one is a review and update of the official development plan resulting in proposed package of ODP amendment. Part two is an update on the public amenity financial plan and strategy. As part of this work, staff are seeking council direction on an alternative approach to secure in-kind delivery of the community center and required utility items. Next slide, please.
I'm just gonna pause you there. I'm just gonna pause you there while the clerk kind of catches up. Are we okay clerks? Uh
Yep, looks good.
Okay.
Hmm, actually, what's back one slide? It's okay, we'll continue. The next slide, please. East Fraserlands is a one hundred and twenty-eight acre site located in the southeast corner of the city of Vancouver, bound by Marine Way, Boundary Road, the Fraser River and Kerr Street. Planning for EFL has been underway since two thousand and two, shortly after the closure of the White Pine Sawmill. Key milestones are policy statement, which is approved in two thousand and four, the official development plan approved in two thousand and six. And the area one and area two rezonings were approved in two thousand and eight and two thousand and ten. The East Fraserlands Financial Plan and Strategy was approved in two thousand and ten as well. Next slide, please. Uh construction of the new community commenced in two thousand and eleven. This map shows development progress in EFL. The blue are completed sites, red are sites under construction, purple have design in process, yellow have re- recent rezoning approvals from two thousand and nineteen, and area three and area five are not yet rezoned. Next slide, please. The next few slides are a quick snapshot of the EFL plan and progress to date. EFL is a new residential community planned to accommodate seven point two million square feet of residential floor area, which is approximately seventy-five hundred units. EFL includes a variety of building forms and tenures, including twenty percent of the units for social housing. To date, roughly thirty-five hundred residents of an anticipated population of twelve thousand five hundred have moved into EFL. Next slide. EFL is envisioned to be a complete sustainable community with shops and services located onsite to serve the new population. The four corners comprising the town square are now completed and the grocery store, drugstore and liquor store are open for business. This is a major milestone in the buildout of the new community. Next slide, please. New city streets and infrastructure are being delivered by the developer, including green infrastructure to manage rainwater. Next slide. The plan includes a variety of public spaces for the neighborhood, including public parks, plazas and other public amenities. Next slide. In two thousand and seventeen, council endorsed a planning program to review development in EFL to look for opportunities to increase housing diversity, to update the official development plan to better reflect new city policies and standards, to better respond to changing environmental conditions due to climate change, to improve the delivery of public benefits and to revise the central waterfront to create a standalone community center. That last item was approved in two thousand and eighteen. Next slide, please. Part one of the work we've completed uh is a summary of a package of proposed amendments to the official development plan. These are resulting from two streams of work. The first is a review of city policy and the second is a review of the master plan. Next slide. As part of the EFL review, staff have assessed relevant city policy approved since two thousand and six and incorporated or updated language in the ODP. A full summary of the proposed changes are outlined in page ten, on page ten of the report and in appendix A. Next slide, please. In addition to the policy review, a robust process with multiple engagement touchpoints to explore amendments of the master plan were undertaken. In two thousand and seventeen, we launched the planning program. In January eight, eight, twenty eighteen, we took forward two concepts for public comment. May twenty eighteen, uh we took forward a preferred concept plan. In July twenty eighteen, we had a interim report on the standalone community center and to update requirements related to sea level rise and flood mitigation. In September twenty nineteen, the refined concept plan and proposed ODP amendments were taken to the public. Since that time, staff have been working to identify options to address amenity delivery challenges, which we'll cover in part two of this report. The final step in this process is this council report tonight uh with the package of proposed ODP amendments. Next slide, please. As part of the master plan review, city staff worked with West Group and their design team led by dialogue architects and public space consultants, GEL Architecture, to develop a public space framework that maintains the importance of the retail high street, creates a sequence of park experiences along the waterfront, anchors the high street with the community center, enhances and expands Avalon Park Corridor, introduces a new east-west passo, maintains and enhances connectivity within the plan. Next slide, please. The preferred concept plan layers new housing opportunities onto the public stuff, space framework, increasing the overall density within area one and three by approximately one point five million square feet. Consistent with the ODP urban design guiding principles, building heights increased towards the central neighborhood in area one and stepped down to the river's edge. A range of buildings are provided, including low and mid-rise buildings and taller tower form. The park in area three is increased along the waterfront and Avalon Park Corridor is expanded. Next slide, please. Range of housing tenure is included in the revised plan. This image shows the anticipated housing sites in area three. Blue is social housing, red is rental housing and the remainder is market housing. As a result of the proposed changes, the density in area three will increase from two point one million square feet to three point two million square feet. Next slide, please. Additional building height and density is also proposed on unbuilt sites in area one to optimize housing choice and to ensure the central neighborhood is marked by the tallest buildings. Previously twenty-four stories proposed to be twenty-eight and the highest intensity. It is a result, as a result of the planned changes, an additional four hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet is proposed to be added to the waterfront precinct. This includes fifty-five thousand square feet of social housing shown in yellow, a hundred thousand square feet of rental and an additional two hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet of strata. The rental will be determined through the rezoning process where that's located. Next slide, please. To support the increased population and to improve the existing package of amenities, the following expanded public amenities are proposed. Twenty additional childcare spaces to increase a forty-nine space facility to a sixty-nine space facility for optimal operation. An additional two acres of park along the area three shoreline, a field house to support the turf field uh and transportation improvements, including previously unaccounted for anticipated expenditures. This package has a value of approximately thirty-eight million and does not include purchase of housing sites or construction of affordable housing. Next slide, please. During the tenure review, we've hosted four rounds of public event. The primary feedback is focused on plan implementation, including the slow pace of amenity delivery and the lack of transit and parking. Regarding the proposed changes to the plan, there is support for the additional amenities and some concern about additional height and density. Next slide, please. A comprehensive update to the ODP is attached to the staff report as appendix A. It includes the draft amending bylaw. Given the scope of the changes, a red line is also attached as appendix H. Staff noted drafting error in the bylaw attached to the report, which has been corrected, as shown on this slide and is posted for consideration tonight. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes the proposed amendments resulting from the first part of this report. It includes a package of amendments to the East Fraserlands Official Development Plan under recommendation A. Consequential amendment to CD one five sixty-seven for additional building height on parcel twenty-nine thirty, which is recommendation B, and replacement pages for the phase one design guidelines to reflect the additional building height as recommendation C. Next slide. The second part of the EFL tenure review is an update of the financial plan and strategy. The staff team is also seeking council direction on an approach that would secure an in-kind delivery of the community center. Next slide. The public amenity strategy approved in two thousand and ten includes council direction that all of the DCLs and CACs accruing to the city from development be used as sources of funding for the public amenities contained within the EFL ODP. The financial plan outlines responsibilities for both the developer and the city. The city is responsible for the construction of the amenities and the purchase of affordable housing sites. The developer is responsible for onsite infrastructure, soil reme The developer is responsible for onsite infrastructure, soil remediation, shoreline works, provision of land for amenities, and securing rail crossings and waterfront access. Next slide, please. Since 2017, delivery of amenities in EFL has ramped up. The EFL ODP requires that 20% of the units be for affordable housing onsite, shown here in blue, which is approximately 1.2 million square feet. Affordable housing in EFL meets the city's definition of social housing. There are approximately 937 units of housing underway, with the first buildings achieving occupancy permit late last year. The EFL ODP also includes 25 acres of parks and open space, shown on green. Detailed parks designed for Area 2 are completed and construction is being phased. In Area 1, consultation on the design of promontory park is underway. The EFL ODP also includes four childcare centers with 256 spaces. Since the plan was approved, two childcare facilities have been moved from mixed-use developments to city-controlled sites to provide greater flexibility for delivery. Planning is underway for the first childcare center located in red dot number 3, which is just in the West Fraserlands Boundary. It's being led by the city's facilities team. To date, we've collected roughly 38 million in development revenues in EFL, and we've completed or committed to approximately 57 million in expenditures. Next slide, please. The second part of the ODP tenure review is to update the financial plan and strategy in an effort to improve amenity delivery. As part of this work, we've updated our revenue and cost projections. While the cost of providing the amenities has increased by 126 million, our revenue projections have not kept pace. In 2010, the funding gap was 25 million, and today it's 50 million. I want to note here that the financial analysis includes the additional amenities and expected expenditures to illustrate the full funding challenge. Next slide, please. In addition to the net funding challenge, there are also limitations on how funding is allocated. DCLs can be used to pay for parks, affordable housing, childcare, transportation, and utilities. There's a shortfall of 63 million in DCLs to pay for the amenities included in the plan. The community center is not DCL-eligible and relies primarily on CACs generated within the project. It has a shortfall of at least 15 million, potentially more if the sites don't rezon or if CACs are less than anticipated. While the project overall has a net deficit, there is a surplus in UDCLs generated within the plan area. Next slide, please. To address the amenity challenges in EFL, staff considered upwards of 40 options to increase revenues and/or decrease costs. Eight options were provided in the council report. There are two key findings moving forward. One is that the best approach to address the DCL shortfall is to allocate citywide DCLs from outside the EFL ODP area to pay for parks, childcare, housing, and transportation. This will require that EFL amenities are considered within the context of DCL and amenity needs citywide through the capital planning process. The second finding is that the timely delivery of the community center is a significant challenge, given that it is not DCL-eligible. Next slide, please. The 30,000-square-foot community center is one of the key amenities within the plan. It anchors the high street and creates a significant public destination on the waterfront. It was planned for roughly halfway through the development, which was projected to be approximately 2025. Currently, roughly 9 million in CACs of the required 35 million to deliver the facility is secured. Next slide, please. To address this problem, staff recommend approval of EFL from the UD, removal, staff recommend removal of EFL from the UDCL to redirect surplus revenue to the community center. The UDCL introduced in 2018 will generate 48 million over the life of the project, and West Group, who owns most of the site, will be required to pay 45 million. This cost was not factored into the 2010 financial plan and strategy. There are three projects within EFL that are on the UDCL list with a value of approximately 21 million. Staff support removal of the EF, of EFL from the UDCL because new infrastructure and upgrades are largely provided by the developer as servicing requirements. A large portion of the remaining infrastructure flows directly east into Burnaby with limited impacts on city infrastructure, and the surplus of 24 million generated by EFL could be put towards amenity delivery where there is a significant funding challenge. Next slide, please. Staff have worked with the developer to come up with a framework that achieves both the community center and the required drainage utilities works. The first column shows the cost of the community center and utilities items to be secured. The second column shows the revenues and revenue sources, including 87% of the UDCL, CAC top-up from CACs that are already collected and negotiated, as well as the anticipated CACs from the Area 1 additional density. Any surplus to be confirmed when the CACs are negotiated could be reinvested in the DCL item. This approach will require multiple council decisions. Next slide, please. The main benefits of this approach are that it secures a source of funds for the community center, provides timing and delivery certainty, shifts the responsibility of utility construction to the developer, shifts the community center construction cost escalation risk to the developer, and removes EFL from citywide prioritization and competition for importing CACs. Next slide, please. This approach requires multiple steps and council decisions. Step one is tonight, council consideration of the proposed package of ODP amendments, including additional density and direction to pursue the UDCL removal. If council does not support the proposed ODP amendments, then the development of EFL will continue as planned. Should council approve the ODP amendments and the direction to pursue UDCL removal, then staff will move to step two, which is to bring in a rezoning application for Area 1. The package would include amendments to the UDCL bylaw to move, remove EFL, confirmation of the CAC, and cost to construct the community center, enactment conditions for delivery of the community center and utilities items, and legal agreements to secure delivery of the community center, including development holds on future phases for construction milestones. If not supported, the community center will remain as a city responsibility, which is currently underfunded by CACs. Next slide, please. In summary, there are two key findings from the review of the EFL financial plan and strategy. The first is to address the funding shortfall. City will need to continue to import citywide DCLs to augment funding for parks, childcare, housing, and transportation amenities through the capital plan process. For this, council direction is not required. The second is the community center, which is not DCL-eligible, is a significant challenge. To ensure timely delivery of the community center, staff are seeking council direction to pursue removal of EFL from the DCL boundary, as outlined in Recommendation D. On balance, staff believe this approach represents the best opportunity to secure delivery of the community center and reduce city risks with cost increases. That concludes the presentation. The staff team is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks very much. Counselor Swanson on the list for questions. We're at about 20 to 10, counsel, just so you know. Counselor Swanson.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I'm wondering what won't get funded because the EFL wouldn't be paying the utility district fees. Would it get felt down the road? Who would feel the impact? Who wouldn't get funded? Will the utility district fees have to go up so other developers, for other developers may be more down the road? Those kinds of things.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Swanson. I'll start, and then some of the technical staff will jump in. The, there's $21 million worth of utilities items that would be covered in the next few years of plan development, probably the next 10 years. That would mean that there's 24 million that is not available for citywide UDCL projects. The current project list goes till 2026, and so that, beyond 2026 piece is still under development review. I'm wondering, Chalice, if you would like to jump in, or Grace Cheng?
Hi Kirsten, thanks. It's Chalice Joseph from Engineering. I think Kirsten captured it very well, so there are the 21 million in this set until 2026. Beyond 2026, we are still in the works of developing that project list of what the UDCL project list will look like. We will still need to develop what those projected revenue citywide look like, and that will determine what their rate looks like. So we can't confirm what the impact is to those future project lists and that future rate at this time.
So, most of this is for the community center, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Do we know what the population of this area is projected to be and how that compares with the population that's required for other community centers to be built?
I can say, Kirsten Robinson, again, the population projection for East Fraserlands is 12,500. With the additional density, it's closer to 15,500. When we planned new communities, large, new communities like Southeast Falls Creek, East Fraserlands, Northeast Falls Creek, there have been community centers associated with those. Generally, they're not smaller than 30,000 square feet because that's what's required to be operationally efficient. I'm not sure how it compares to existing communities where there are community centers that are in need of renewal.
So I'm just wondering what the population base for a usual community center is? Like, say, in Northeast Falls Creek or South Falls Creek or any other place? Do you have those figures?
I'm hoping that our parks board staff read that.
Would it be more than 15,000?
Yeah, Katie Eaton, are you able to answer this one?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I think, I'm actually not able to answer this tonight, but I can come back with an answer tomorrow if that, if that's helpful.
Yeah, that would be good. What would happen if the promised childcare isn't built on schedule?
The, the, there's a childcare facility that's being planned right now. It, we expect to have the development permit application in process shortly. I believe that the timeline for construction through to opening day is about three years from now. There is a second childcare center planned for the roof of the community center, which will require a DCL, so that funding will have to be timed to match up with the community center delivery if council chooses to proceed.
And I'm just wondering if we do the utility DCL maneuver, what kind of precedent that sets for other developments in the city?
I can start on this one as well. We've done some analysis to try to understand how East Fraserlands is unique compared to other developments in the city. There are a couple of things. One is that the developer is required to provide all of the servicing and infrastructure. Most of the servicing that's been completed so far flows into Vancouver. The remaining servicing for sewer flows eastward into Burnaby, which is a pretty unique condition in the city. It was for some of these reasons that we thought that there was an opportunity to redirect some of that funding. I'm wondering if Engineering would like to add to that? Oh, Engineering would not like to add to that.
And we're at the five minutes, so I'm gonna go on to Counselor Carr. Counselor Carr.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So my questions also are really around the delivery of the amenities, and this is a a plan to provide the, I guess, to divert funds from, or payments from going one place to going into the East Fraserlands so that amenities can be delivered. You know, over the last number of years, there's, I've just really sensed the frustration of residents around this delivery of, of the expected amenities. So what in this plan and these measures that are, contain in the report, are staff considering to be, potentially have some risk involved with them? What are the sort of, I mean, I know that you're presenting them to us as, as things we should move on, but where are the risks? Because I've seen risks crop up in this area on numerous occasions, so do you, do you foresee any here?
I could probably start with that. I think one of the things, since we started this review in 2017, there has been tremendous progress made on amenity delivery. We purchased almost all of the affordable housing sites that are available, and 937 units are under construction or nearing completion, which is, was not started at all in 2017. The other progress that we've made since 2017 is now all of the Area 2 parks are designed and funded, and we're working through phasing of those parks, given the provincial approvals required for the shoreline works. The childcare does require a substantial amount of funding. Each of them are around $10 million, depending on the, the configuration. And so, citywide, there has been a backlog in the amount of funding available for childcare, or I shouldn't say backlog, but there's been other priorities that have been ahead of EFL in terms of childcare facilities. So it is one area where we've worked hard. The biggest risk really is the community center where we're, we don't have another funding source other than the CACs we've collected to date.
So that's why this report and these recommendations? Okay, all right, that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to, let's see here. Just pulling up my queue, Counselor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So just following up on this, I know that the community center is, I, I've heard about this on park, my time on park board and through council, so it's been a number of years now. And I just want to be really clear for the benefit of the public. There was a place, that now there's a plan in place to deliver the community amenities, I believe, and I'm paraphrasing what staff said earlier. There was a plan in place previously. However, we had a gap in timeline of delivery, the rising construction cost that was allocated. So are we certain that through this process and transferring the responsibility for delivering the community center that we can commit to a timeline and the community can see this? Because I remember speaking with lots of kids and parents or families that moved there with young kids, and their kids are gonna be out of high school, and they're still waiting for a community center. So are we able to kind of commit that, yes, this will happen, yes, there's a timeline on it? Would there have, be certainty in this?
The DCL items, the parks, the childcare, and the transportation items still need to be allocated through the capital planning process. So as long as we continue to push to have EFL be a priority within the community, and as there are, as the population is growing and there's a greater need, we don't see a risk with ensuring that the amenities are delivered, aside from there is a $63 million deficit. And so there is a reliance on funding from generated outside of EFL. And so obviously, through the capital planning process, there are trade-offs that are made. We're doing our best efforts to make sure that everything in EFL is delivered in a timely way.
I appreciate that, and I think that the staff always use their best efforts, and they were last time. I, I guess what I'm looking for, if the community is looking at this as a savior, how much certainty is there for them? So can I ask the question really clearly? Could we commit to a timeline of when the community center would be delivered if this plan was adopted by council?
Oh, the community center, yes, we can commit to that. We've been working with the developer. We believe that the community center can be under construction by 2025, and it would take about two years to complete, so it would be operational by 2027. We have been looking at that timeline and think there's a bit of wiggle room. We might be able to move it forward by up to a year, but it depends on approval of the Area 1 additional density rezoning. Because that negotiation leads to the financial ability to secure enough funding to get the community center delivered by West Group.
Okay, so five, six years out, but still with a dependency. Is that, I'm just reflecting back, that's what I heard?
It depends on the Area 1 rezoning and the successful conclusion of that. So it will require a CAC negotiation with the developer. It will also require, the, the cost for the community center are known in some detail in order to enter into an agreement with the developer.
So I guess there's still unknowns, but we think this will get us closer? Because you can, you can appreciate my uncertainty here, because there was a feeling there was a pretty solid plan for delivery last time, and I'm hearing, like, dependency on a rezoning of an entire area. These are not small details to finalize, right?
It is, it is a multi-stepped, multi-decision process, but it gives us our best shot of getting the community center in a timely way. getting the community center in a timely way.
Okay. On the exemption from this, the, the DCL piece for this area from the ODP, does that have an impact on the city's capital budget with respects to utilities?
Finance, are you on the line? Grace, can you answer that?
Yes, well, Engineering can also jump in as well. For the rest of the capital plan, we already have earmarked funding for like this year and next year, so, and we're, we will be starting the next, you know, capital plan in a year's time. So as part of the review of the next UDCL update, we were also looking to that as well.
Okay, can I clarify that, Grace? Does that mean, let me put it, put it in other words, does that mean, mean the city has to pick up capital costs to cover that shortfall? Because we're now exempting them from those fees?
My understanding.
We now have to budget a cost that we wouldn't have had without this policy in capital. That's what I'm trying to ask.
Chalice can comment on the list of projects, including in the current capital plan. Chalice?
Just twenty seconds.
Yeah, thanks. It's Chalice from Engineering, so I can quickly answer. We have budgeted for the items that we have transferred to the developer to deliver in kind, so there shouldn't be.
Mayor, I'll move around, around the questions, please.
Yeah, we're not going to make it there. There's three people on the list, and it's nine minutes.
No, I know we won't do it tonight, but I just wanted to move it for, so it's on the record for when we can.
We have a second round for that.
Sure.
Second.
All in favor, yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Opposed? Okay, so you've got your second round of questions, and we're going to go on to Counselor Hardwick next for up to five.
Great, and I'll be brief. My questions are, we've, we've talked about the community center and about childcare. What about schools? I noticed in the diagram that we're contemplating, you know, we've got the secondary and elementary schools there. What are the implications for the schools in this larger context? Can you comment, please?
Thank you, Counselor Hardwick. The schools in the EFL area are a little complicated. We've provided sites for the VSB and elementary school, as you noted, and a high school as well. Actually, the high school is part of Area Three, so it hasn't been rezoned yet. Currently, there are, there is capacity in the school up in the Champlain neighborhood, and so the school board has not had the EFL elementary school on their project list for a number of years. We are keen to work with them to advance that. The planned school was to accommodate three-hundred-and-fifty kids, grades kindergarten to grade
Well, it seems to me that when we're contemplating that kind of density, that the schools are going to be pretty darn important. But I know that there is other work being done coordinating the city and, and the school board in, in terms of its land and development. Any more insight, or, or is that about covering it for the, for this presentation anyway?
Mostly, we're working with the school board to try to advance delivery of the school. There's also a childcare center planned on that site, so it's in our interest, and certainly the neighborhood is keen on the school. There was a school site in West Fraserlands, which was never built as well, and so we've been hearing for years about kids that have to cross marine and go up the hill to the community. So it would be certainly a benefit to have a more sustainable approach and a neighborhood school to serve the population.
Thanks, and then floodplain. You know, with respect to, to soil and, and the overall climate change concerns, we're right at the river. Is there anything that you'd like to share further in any kind of, of extra considerations around, around the whole area floodplain?
Sure. I can jump in with some planning preamble, and then Engineering will take it away. We've been working, obviously, in the floodplain for a number of years. When we first did the planning approvals back in two thousand and eight, the FCL for the flood construction level was three point five, and so we had planned to grade the whole site up to a new level. The rail corridor is obviously low through the back of the site. Since twenty-seventeen, we've been doing more active work on the flood protection work, and I'm going to pass it over to Chalice for that one.
Or Carson.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Carson Chan. I'm a senior engineer with Engineering. Yeah, so just to build on what Kirsten had mentioned, yes, we have increased the flood construction level to four point eight meters throughout EFL, including raising of the sites behind the river foreshore. We will, or in the process of establishing the dike along the waterfront and Area Two on the west side, most of the work there has been completed, and as the areas to the east are built out, the work will continue to raise the land along the shoreline there to floodproof the remainder of the neighborhood.
Terrific. Thank you very much. I'm done.
Thank you. Counselor Boyle, probably the last question of the evening.
All right. I am hoping to better understand how we got to this place and what we have learned from it in terms of our planning and, and plan and funding going forward. So it, it seems to me, and the question that a number of us have heard from the public is, were a bunch of these amenities, particularly the community center, were, were made as promises to the community, but we never had a full plan for how we would fund them? Is that accurate?
Well, I might describe it slightly differently. The plan that we had in twenty-ten anticipated a few different things than what has come to fruition. We had expected that there would be a couple development sites that were not owned by West Group. There were three sites in West Fraserlands that were expected to contribute, and there are three PEF-owned sites that were expected to contribute to the community center in particular. So there are some revenues that we have not received that we thought we would. Another thing is we've had some of the strata density developed out as rental, which is great for the rental housing and the diversity of housing in the plan, but it has meant that there is less DCLs collected there. We've seen a, a pretty significant increase in the construction costs and the delivery costs associated with the public amenities, including changes to council standards that have made some of the amenities more expensive than they were originally envisioned to be. So there have been a number of factors working against us. I would say too that East Fraserlands is very unique in the city of Vancouver. The CAC is very low from the get-go. We generally see much higher CACs on other large sites, and we have done a lot of work to tailor the public amenity packages to the revenues that we see there. Another lesson learned, I would say, is that when there's an opportunity to have the developer deliver amenities, we, we work with them on that, because sometimes they're able to deliver it cheaper, and sometime, and they generally take on the cost escalation risk, not the city. So there's a number of lessons that we have learned here that we've implemented on other sites primarily.
Thanks.
I'll just say, I really appreciate hearing that, and the explanation of how we got here is really, is really helpful, and I'll leave it at that for now. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. We're just at nine fifty-eight, so just have the clerks mark. Counselor Boyle, you have a couple of minutes left. If you, if there's anything else you think of through, if you want to talk about tomorrow or ask questions about Counselor Weeb, you'll be concluding the first round of questions, and we've got a second round of questions from Counselor Kirby Young. Just so you know, council will be coming back at six PM tomorrow, and I'm just looking at the speakers list. I think there are, sorry, I clicked the wrong button here. I think we've got twenty-two or something, twenty-two speakers to hear from, so it'll be similar to this evening, I imagine. Yeah, twenty-two speakers. So with that, council, I'll just ask for a motion to recess.
Recession.
Yeah, great.
Motion to recess.
Until six PM tomorrow.
Until six PM tomorrow.
Great, we have a second round for that?
Second round.
Thank you, Counselor Weeb. All in favor, yay?
Yay.
Opposed, nay? Great, thanks. We're recessed in council. Just a reminder not to speak to any about this, because we are in the middle of the public hearing process, and we'll hold for lots of speakers tomorrow. So thanks again, and we'll talk to you tomorrow.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Hey, good night.